Council for the rezoning, the town council has two readings on it. First reading introduces it, the second reading, they hold a public hearing also.
So moved?
Second. Mary, second by Lynn to make their recommendation to the town council. Any further discussion by the board? Sign done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Stentions, sheriff's affirmative. And the recommendation for rezoning will be sent to the town council.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, we'll move to continued plans. Pillsbury Realty Development LLC, tax map 10 lots 15, 23, 29C-2A, 29C-2B, 41, 41-1, 41-2, 42, 45, 46, 47, 48, 50, 52, 54-1, 57, 58, 59, and 62. This is a public hearing for a formal review of Woodmont Commons Plan Unit Development, known as a PUD master plan. This is continued from the December 12, 2012 Planning Board Meeting. And was it all the butters were re-notified on this, Cynthia?
Yes.
Okay. That's all been done?
I believe so.
We are all set. Okay. So we'll proceed and what we'll do is just have like a reintroduction of the Woodmont team.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a process question before we get too far? And what are we intending to accomplish tonight by going through this review? Is it just a review of the plan?
Our input, public input, yes, yes. We're nowhere near decision-making stage.
We're not going to be voting on anything.
Right. It's not my intent to do that because I'm not prepared.
I'm not either, so I just wanted to get that clear. Thank you.
Yep. So Ari, you're the lead.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Ari Pollak. I'm with Gallagher, Callahan, and Gartrell. We're Concord Law Firm. We're here for the applicant, Pillsbury Realty, the lead developer for the PUD application. Joining me shortly, Steve Cecil from the Cecil Group. He's going to be making our presentation of the land use briefing document that the members of the board should have received, I think, a week ago and is available on the town's website. Just if I can turn around and tell you who else is here tonight, we may be asking for input on questions. Rick Shellman, Tom Goodwin, and then moving across the second aisle, Kevin Dandrade, TEC Traffic, John Michaels, attorney for the project, and Mike Kettenbach representing Pillsbury Realty. As soon as Steve hooks up his computer, he's going to begin the land use presentation. And just by way of introduction, it's this land use briefing document that each of you should have received. And the presentation is based upon the information in this. It's not a verbatim document. I don't think we have time or ability to reproduce every detail, but the presentation is based on this document, so it should all look familiar to those who had an opportunity to review it.
Okay.
Take it away, Steve.
Here we go.
You do a little magic with the electronics there?
Yeah, it's working. I'm sure it's trying hard here.
We're looking through you to the screen to see when there's something there to talk about.
Something like the electronic age.
Exactly. There it is.
I was going to bring it and then I said, you know what, I just pulled. It's like, you know? This is what we're going over. That's my question though. Let's try this.
Is it the same thing that we have on ours, on our, the PowerPoint that we have on our thing?
It is the same PowerPoint that you have, yes, but then the public won't be able to see it.
No, I know, but you would have it too.
I'm unplugging.
Here we go.
So this one is unplugged and uploading because it hasn't been on in months, so.
Okay.
Applying system updates.
This is doing updates. That's a new computer that was working last week, is not working tonight, so. There we go.
I was going to suggest we just plug this in.
Yeah, Mary, yeah. I just want to note our third-party review consultants here, Ted Brovich also, so we'll jump in where we need to.
We could use an Almond, Mary.
Don't need an Almond.
All right, well, there we go. Technology at its best. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to come in this evening and speak in more detail about the first of a series of topics. And responding to some of the discussion at the last planning board meeting, we have broken the entire PUD master plan into a series of incremental topics. Working together with Cynthia, John, and Ted from the peer review consultant team, we've been thinking about how to focus on a series of topics that in a sequence will give you an opportunity to look more deeply into the PUD master plan application and show how the PUD master application is being formulated and documented in a way to respond to the various kinds of comments and considerations that you've brought forward and that we hope that you'll bring forward this evening in the discussion that we're going to pursue. As part of the process of advancing the PUD master plan application, the idea has been to provide a briefing document about the information that we're going to cover this evening to you in advance and then to have a PowerPoint presentation that will cover the same topics in a way that the graphics can be available to people who are here in the room or who may be watching through a video. But also in that regard, we've tried to make sure that the presentation that we're bringing is substantively the same as the briefing documents, so that we're going over that material as we move ahead. And I'll explain, there are some certain things that we picked up in the last couple of days that I think will help clarify a few of the pieces of the presentation and discussion. But our thought would be to walk through the basic structure and ideas that we have to present and then open it up for discussion, comments, and we'll be available to respond to those as we go ahead. So beginning the presentation, the next slide talks a little bit about what the purposes of this briefing are. We're going to be talking about, of course, the Woodmont Commons project. We'll just quickly touch base on what the process is overall and what the focus is this evening for those who may not be as integrally involved or aware of the history of the process and the project. We're going to talk a little bit about the context of that process, but move quickly into focusing on the PUD master plan area and the land use aspects of it. We're going to talk a little bit about this structure of an overall land use concept, but then the designation of a series of sub-areas that will be used to create a more fine-grained approach generally and think about looking ahead to the future briefings and other topics, how when you talk about land use, and it's one of the things about a large area master plan, a lot of things link together. So the land use master plan needs to be understood in relationship to the transportation, that we're coming up to a briefing on that, to think about open space, and to think about design standards, et cetera. And we're going to give you a bit of a preview of the topics that we're going to be talking about and working with you over the course of the next series of meetings. So having talked about that, next slide. The purpose, the Woodmont Commons PUD master plan, as you all know, is an area that corresponds to roughly 600 acres of land. Next slide. And all of it within Londonderry, of course. And that in the application approval process, we're following the completed application that was accepted as completed in October and launching into a series of meetings on a variety of topics. The land use topic today is going to focus on the range of uses that would be allowable and how there are some maximum development standards associated with those uses and sub-areas to make sure that the distribution of those uses and the flexibility associated with how you shift those land uses over time to respond to market considerations or other aspects of practical development of a scale this size can be predictable and can be managed. Now, at the last meeting, and the next slide talks about this, we had introduced an idea that the application will become a series of final documents that will have several purposes. And one of the purposes in our thinking of structuring this and responding to some of the comments that we received, including from the peer consultant, is that the document will become a working regulatory framework. You will be faced over a series of years with a series of applications that you need to understand, that the proponents are going to need to understand, whether they be for roads or streets or development ideas or buildings. And we need to think about this document as a working document that's easy to use and understand on the other side of a prospective approval. Should everything go well? And as far as that's concerned, one of the discussions we had was to make sure that we'd go through a sequence of topics, but that we cover all of the topics in this expanded outline that we talked about at the last meeting. So in the briefing document you received and in the slide that we have in front of you, we focused on, at the bottom of that, there's an outline, three pages of an outline. And it shows in blue there at the bottom of the slide here that we're focused on the components that will become the final land use plan components after they're refined and we respond to the various kinds of issues that are raised. But our discussion this evening is going to be linked to a series of other topics because you can't really speak of one topic without understanding how it links up. There will be an introductory section that talks about the planning context. How does the land use plan relate to that context? The next slide points out that there's some key topics having to do with the way the transportation infrastructure standards and open space standards. And the next slide highlights the fact that when you think about land use planning, you need to also start thinking about the way that other aspects, like the site development standards and the project development standards, are going to have their own role, for example, in limiting and directing density. That's partly in the land use plan, but it's partly how you allow these other pieces. So we're going to touch base on those other topics. Now, we've been working on a schedule of briefing so that as we go through the briefings and the discussions, you'll see how we're covering the entire range of topics in the overall outline, so that by the time a refined set of final documents appears in front of you, you'll have had a chance to see the ideas, many of the draft components, discuss them with us, and we'll be able to put them in place so that it all hopefully makes not only sense, but ties tightly together. So the next slide just reminds us that this planning process has been going on for a while and it predates the application process. So as far as that context is concerned, one of the things that has been an important part of describing what the future could be has been, as the next slide shows, example illustrations. And there have been concept plans, and this was a central concept plan in the application, that showed how the different land use principles could, in one set of circumstances, play through to become a distribution of housing and commercial uses, retail uses, et cetera, open space and roadways. But as has been emphasized throughout that document and in our discussion, this is one version of how this could emerge. And our job together is to understand what are the rules that drive and limit the range of what could occur and represent the underlying principles that we're trying to achieve. And one of the things that is important about this also is that it's been very helpful to have a scenario like the illustration in the briefing document and the one in front of you there to help us frame, thinking about the transportation implications and impacts, et cetera, as a starting point while we're understanding other ways in which things could occur as well. But now what I want to do, and by the way, these aspects will be addressed in the first chapter or the first section of the final document. So if you want to understand where these things will emerge and go back, that's how these topics will be addressed. But what I'd like to do now is move into the components that will be most directly within and associated with the land use section of the PUD master plan. So just to summarize, we have transferred the graphics so that they're over the top of the town's GIS system and mapping, so that the identification of streets and roads and parcels align with the kinds of planning documents that you use. It makes it much more clear, we think, and much more simple. And what we're showing is a boundary in the overall planning area. And part of the key idea here, of course, is that these are all integral parcels and contiguous land that extends across all of the intervening roads and rights of way that are part of roads and utility easements. So that's part of, in your zoning ordinance, the idea that PUDs span across those kinds. And there are a number of different locations where that occurs, but that defines the outline of the PUD master plan area. The next slide lists the existing parcels that are composed in that overall PUD master plan area. And we've listed the parcel IDs and the acreage and summarized the total acreage that's within that. And these are important to reference. Now, the thing about this, and this is, for example, the existing parcels will show up in the introductory section, the intention, and the next slide underlines this idea, is that while all of this land, these parcels, are being advanced under the applicant with the notion of an initial existing ownership structure, the idea over time is to sell or lease or to subdivide this land and there will be multiple owners. Fundamental to this, then, is understanding how does a multiple-owner, large PUD master plan get administered in the future? And the approval framework includes a very important concept that is typical of these circumstances, in that there would be an entity established that would be the coordinating entity composed of the ownership entities and other, and related interests, that would manage into the future all of the land and the approvals and subdivision and ownership circumstances within the entire area. This is really important because what you don't want to have happen is approve a PUD, have it subdivided, and then have multiple owners coming in front of the planning board saying, I think I have the right to develop something. No, I have the right to develop something. Well, there's a limit on development. Well, it applies to me and not them. No, it applies to everybody and will be coordinated by an entity and approved for even bringing future approvals to the planning board. So I bring that up because later in the process, as we start to understand how all of this is going to be administered, it's important both from the proponent's standpoint and from the town's standpoint to make sure that the rules that we're setting up will actually be practical and used by everybody. The next slide just reminds us about what the underlying zoning is and what the categories are. And they range from agricultural, residential, industrial, commercial, that are there today. The purpose of your zoning ordinance, as far as the PUD section is concerned, is to provide for increased flexibility in the way that land use is thought about, recognizing that there's some real benefits of doing that. And so we're actually drawing, as we'll describe, from the list of uses for the ideas about what uses could occur, but the distribution of them, looking at the land as a whole and thinking about categories and some new subcategories is very important. So the next slide gets into the heart of the land use classification process. And the best way to describe this, I think, is that we are trying to advance an idea in concert with the town, with the consultant, and with your staff, to come up with a way to better classify the various uses that will be allowable or have special regulations associated with them. And in doing that, a suggestion has come up that we think is really good and helpful to classify, to put some major categories that aren't quite the same as your standard zoning, but they're much more common sense in terms of, I should say, my understanding of how these uses get classified. And they're better linked to the classification of uses that the PUD master plan, the Woodmont Commons master plan, is advancing. So those categories, so if you look at your zoning, you won't find exactly the way to drop this out, but the notion that we have agricultural uses, residential uses, civic uses, institutional uses, accommodation, and accommodation means hotels, bed and breakfast, that sort of thing, and then business uses. Underneath those, then, are a series of subcategories. And I think you'll see that this overall framework fits a lot better and is a lot more accommodating to communication and understanding. So now, this is the next set of slides, and they are fairly extensive and I'm not, yep.
Mary has a question.
I'm just wondering if it's possible, because I like your list and I think that's a really great way of pulling it all out. But I'm just wondering if for, you know, everybody's education, you can just put under, next to agricultural, if that would be on your, on the, for example, the PUD master plan area page where it says AR1, industrial 1, C1, C2, C3? If you can put next to agricultural, that would be AR1. If you could put next to residential, that would be AR1. If you could put next to civic uses, that would be C1?
Well, presumably, depending if it's a municipal use, it could be all, but we'll have to take a look at that. Yeah, but I see your point.
And I think the next page might answer some of that as well.
But I think if we have it all in one place, then people don't have to be going back and forth between pages. The more information you can give in one place is going to be the better. Thank you.
Yeah, that's very good. So what occurs then is that within those categories, in the next two slides and in your briefing package, we managed to get it on one long page. We broke down those categories and you'll see across the top, we list the existing underlying zonings. You'll see the AR1, C1, C2, C3, IND1. And we use the same kind of classification that you all have as your standard approach, where things are permitted or they perhaps require a conditional use permit or a special exception. So you can see where, within that overall framework, various things would be permitted if you don't provide the kind of flexible, comprehensively planned approach that a PUD would have. Then the last two, the last two columns there, we have those kinds of uses that would be permitted within the PUD. Now, one of the things that's important, we say permitted, well, it's subject to lots of conditions and that we're going to be getting into on various levels, that have to do with making sure that the entire area is assembled very, very well, including site plan review and site plan standards and flexibility standards, but that there would be a route for a particular proposal to be approved for that use within the PUD. There would be a way for that to happen. Now, in doing this, one of the things that, there are a couple of things I'd like to bring to your attention. There are some new subcategories, subcategories that aren't clearly called out in your existing zoning. And so we're going to make sure that we, from an overall legal process and from a planning process, we understand how those might be advanced. But we're, so we're calling out, and there are little red tags there, this is a new subcategory. We want to make sure that we're tracking and planning for. One of them is accessory dwelling units. Accessory dwelling units are, well, one way people talk about them is mother-in-law apartments. They're, it's not a two-family home, it's a smaller accessory dwelling unit. Parking structures, you allow for parking, but putting them in structures is a more efficient way of using land, but there needs to be, of course, design and other standards associated with it. The hospital as a use, which has been much a part of the planning conversation to date, is a new subcategory, and that's grouped under institutional uses. Now, let me just pause there while I'm talking about the institutional uses. We've gathered within the institutional category, assisted living, nursing homes and accessory uses that come along with nursing homes, and hospital. And it wasn't really clear within the classification systems or the way the application came, how to really consider the opportunities to have nursing homes and assisted living. Is it housing? Is it a separate category? How does that relate to hospital uses? They're similar, but they're different. So the idea is to group all of those together under an institutional category. And then under accommodation, you have the hotels, and we've been focusing in part in the planning on the possibility of larger hotels that might have a significant number of rooms. And at the lower end of the category, lowest end of the category, are the PUD bed and breakfast, the kind of homestay, small bed and breakfast. We realized, by the way, coming to the meeting, and so we've been looking to check that the translation of all of the information in the application has been translated to the new form properly. There was a third category that was defined, but was never quite figured out and where it, how it should be allocated. And that is that there is a PUD hotel, which was intended to be a small hotel of 30 units or less. Those little, when I think of them as, they call them kind of niche hotels or special hotels. And so there had been discussion of that, it was in the application, but we haven't addressed it yet in terms of where it might sit. So that's something that we need to be thinking about together. Other than that, I think the list and the categories in terms of subcategories either accord with where you have it or it's called out in a new way, which is why we have subcategories. The next slide focuses on the business use categories, and it's structured in the same way. The first four or five columns there go through what the existing zones are and what would be permitted under special use or conditional, et cetera. So then, again, the full list is intended to be permissible under the right conditions within some area of the PUD, the Woodmont Commons. The new subcategory there is a really interesting one, and it's the notion of office building space. There is a significant emphasis within the Woodmont Commons for mixed uses. So for example, you might have a building that has office space above and a retail shop below. Or you might imagine having a place that has some housing on an upper floor and has an office space below. But what has been a separate category throughout, it's been the notion that there might be a series of freestanding, single-use office buildings that might occur. And that's, so the use is the same as it would be in a mixed-use building where there is office, but we wanted, in terms of regulating how much and where that goes, to make sure that we could call that out as a building type and not just a use type. So that's why we've put a little emphasis on that as a new subcategory in the way we've listed that. The next slide, then, and maybe we could pause at the end of this because we've already covered a lot before we continue. But if you look at that overall master plan area that we talked about, the 603 acres, and you think about all of those use categories, the idea in traditional zoning is the idea in traditional zoning is often that, once a use is permitted or meets various conditions, that you don't actually control the total amount that occurs. It's pretty interesting. It's controlled maybe perhaps by density. If you've got one acre zoning, to make it simple, and there's 20 acres, you can have 20 units. But if it's a very large area, it's not the total amount that gets controlled. What Woodmont Commons does is to say that, listen, we have this overall area, we have all of these uses, but we're putting caps, some important caps, on the entire thing in terms of what the total amount of housing could be, regardless of how it gets distributed in a sense, that we have a cap on these institutional uses, and we've got some specific notations there about the square footage, gross square footage of some of these things, that some of them are counted by dwelling units, for example, the residential. The accommodations, there are limitations that have to do with the size of these and how many rooms that could occur. Business uses, and that's notion that there might be standalone office buildings that could occur, as well as mixed use. There are no limits on several categories, and that was sort of, I think we assumed that, but we thought, well, we haven't really stated that. So, for example, agricultural uses, we don't see a limit on the amount of agricultural uses as being all that helpful. And civic uses, as they emerge, probably makes sense, given the amount and the type that occur. We're not sure what a limit we really do. We don't expect great, great numbers of these things, if you look at the definitions, to occur. But the basic idea is that the big-ticket items, the large components that generate the transportation, the fiscal implications, and certainly the design standpoint, making a cohesive environment, those were saying total, there's a maximum. Now, the next set of slides and topics begin to say, okay, if the uses make sense as a whole, and if there's this capping going on, there's still a really important idea that it's not one-size-fits-all. We need to break down these areas following the planning processes that have been going on for several years, and think about where and how those get allocated, so that each of the pieces becomes good neighbors to the existing uses, but good neighbors internally in terms of development. And I'll speak about that in a little more detail and talk about the sub-area structure, but maybe it's, it would be a good idea, it's up to you, of course, but we might pause and catch up with all of the topics we've discovered.
Before we get too much for it, because I have some questions. Well, I'll do, I'll do the board, and then anyone from the public has any questions. The board, the public, and actually, I'll start with staff, if they have any questions at this point.
Not at this point.
Oh, okay. And I'll just go, Chris.
It's going to be a long night. Various items I wanted to raise up. One was that I think we really need to have a glossary of terms available for each section. I know there's a lot of jargon in here, and for us and for the public, I think there needs to be--
I think we need some real definitions, because I'm still hung up on office building space.
Yeah, yeah. So, there's those types of terms, and then there's the acronyms, and I think we need the glossary of those terms, TNDs, PUDs, et cetera. Just as a preface for each one of these?
Yes, I think it'd be very helpful, and I'll confess that we're developing one ourselves, because even, it gets confusing quickly. You bet. That's a good point.
On the document, the land use briefing that you sent to us, on page five, you're outlining, you know, some of the goals, kind of bulletized, to indicate, you know, the general description of it. And one of the things I would add in there, because from what you're, in certain areas, from what you're proposing, there's going to be, you know, buildings on a, business buildings on a, with a, you know, pedestrian walkway in front, and then parking behind the buildings, that one of the goals be the maintainability of that, because I know from the town's perspective, go outside now, there's a lot of sidewalks not cleared in the town right now. That's, you know, a concern, that that be a prime criteria for, you know, the whole area. I think you're going to, and I made notes through here, and then I went, as I got further in the document, I realized you'd addressed it further in, but in the conceptual, the TND illustrative plan, over on the side, eastern side of I-93--
Yeah.
The layout there, it didn't clearly, it didn't clearly indicate in some of the diagrams that there was going to be an exit 4A, and there was going to be a road going out to Derry, and it sort of looked like the plan was intersecting with that, and that it wouldn't be, you know, I'm presuming that the DOT is going to be putting a pretty straight road out there to connect into Derry.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and you're going to need feeder roads off of that, rather than it being a neighborhood sort of windy image that you had in there.
That's right, and I think that's one of the challenges when you draw an illustration, and you're trying to be complete, but not imply exactly where something is going to be that's under planning. There are these discrepancies that show up, so our thought is to have very clear diagrams and descriptions of how each one of these components will work, so we can see how they come back together.
Has the DOT published, you know, basically what they believe is going to be the road line through that area? So, that's still yet to be designed?
My understanding is that there are design studies that have been done, and that the environmental impact work is underway, but its particular status, I'm not aware of.
Okay. So, on that, on that illustration, you've got the line that you believe that the DOT's got--
Yeah, the general, the general idea, though, is that it's intended to be accurate relative to what's known about that in terms of where the interchange would be, and what the overall alignment of the main road would be. And then, we've got a diagram later on that shows that, and then refers, just refers to it as the, as part of the overall connector.
It's been our understanding that what's shown on the example plan is what has been presented as a finalist design. Whether it has actually been selected by federal powers for the interchange or not is not something that this team can comment on tonight.
Okay, so, it's an unknown, not yet determined for you either, so?
Right, and so, in a way, what we know, the connection, the idea of the connection's very strong and very important, but it ends up being a kind of a dash to arrow in terms of a general planning concept.
Where it's going to be, yeah.
And that's why the diagrams we have start to reflect that.
You'll see the diagrams later in the land briefing refer to it again as a dotted line. There is to be a connection, specifically where or how is not something that we know.
So, just for everybody's--
Yeah.
Anything that's sort of drawn over there, it's sort of, it's conceptual at this point, you can't really kind of lay out a, this will be this area, this will be this area.
Exactly, and that's always the problem, if you're trying to illustrate it so you can make it understandable, but trying to draw something that is understandable is all dashed lines, it's the rules that'll set it in place, but these discrepancies are important to bring out, you know, or topics, I should say.
You could look at page 29 in the land use briefing, you could see a diagram that shows the intention to connect. Exactly how is not something that we've put into this briefing.
And the idea is it extends over to the Folsom Road--
Dotted lines.
You know, so that it doesn't just dead-end it, it doesn't dead-end at the boundary, it's a connector.
So, one thing you're going to get into in the next section, I think, is where, the breakdown of the sub-areas, but you made a comment regarding, one of the prime purposes for the PUD is flexibility, but a concern I have, and we've touched on it, and you've taken it into consideration, but I think we're going to make sure that it's very clearly defined in here, is the like-to-like on the boundaries. With the breakdown of the lots as they currently stand and the way they're currently zoned, when you go into the sub-areas, I've got questions on those ones, but where they are but up to existing areas, I think that that question of flexibility becomes much less so.
Yes.
That those areas have to be what we determine in the master plan. So, for example, along an area where there is existing residential, there is only ever going to be a possibility of being a like in that area. So, that we were clear in the document that that's, that part isn't flexible, but there's more flexibility on the interior.
Yeah, I think that, and one of the things that's difficult, and actually, the diagram that's up on the screen right now, is an amalgam of various drawings and sketches and ideas that emerged in the several-year planning process to reflect that, this particular idea. And so, you'll see it in the illustration, but also in the way the sub-areas begin to set up. So, the areas that are closest to the lower-scale, single-family areas at the edges are really thought about as being low-density and residential areas. It's not quite an olive plan, I use the term olive because you've got the pimento on the inside and the green stuff on the outside, but it's a little bit like that, so that as you come in towards the middle, away from the edges, it gets to be perhaps more mixed, more compact in terms of development. With the, the one thing that makes it a little different is that there's some edges there along the highway where--
Yeah, and that's what I'm getting on--
You know, actually, it's pretty flexible.
Like-to-like, yeah. If it's up against the highway, then it's not up against residential, yeah, no, no.
Yeah, and--
When we move into the next part of this, and we get into the matrix of permitted uses--
Yes.
You'll see that as you move from traditionally residential areas to the more commercial areas, the residential uses, or rather, the commercial--
It gets more narrow down.
Fade away in the residential areas to maintain that harmony with what's on the perimeter.
Yep. So, on page 17, the underlying zoning, has staff gone through that and verified that that's what our current zoning tables do, that we've matched to what we currently have, for example, C1?
Generally, I've spot-checked it. I haven't gone one by one.
One, yeah, so we should make sure we do do that.
Our consultant has done that.
Okay. And also in that, the one that's a little concerning is the column PUD, where it's all permitted with the, you know, asterisk number next to it. We've got those referenced at the bottom of that table, but it's referencing sections that I don't think we have in this document.
Exactly, exactly. And so, the idea is, we don't list it if it's not permitted, of course, there's no point, but the idea would be to say, these are permitted if a certain things happen, and we're going to talk about some of those ifs with the sub-areas, but it goes further than that in terms of the site planning regulations and other kinds of regulations that go to it. So, you might, in fact, we've even thought, maybe we need another term than P, because P isn't really getting it, it's almost like maybe.
Yeah, that's the concern I have, is that this sort, you know, I understand what you're trying to do, is that these are permitted across the entire area, but then within a given sub-area, they're not--
Maybe yes, or maybe no.
Yes, and that's your other table that we'll talk about.
Exactly.
Like a conditional use type of--
Almost like conditional, but that would imply, in our current regs, that they'd have to have a conditional permit every time they wanted to do something, so I agree that maybe--
Maybe we need a different term, and that's because we've got a new kind of a thing on our hands, this PUD.
What we have there now is representative of what's in the existing ordinance, but if you compare, let's say, what you find on page 17 to the matrix of uses that appears on page 25--
Yep.
You'll see that not every use is allowed in every sub-area, and so, while the use is generally available for PUD-style development, we're not proposing them all in each subcategory and in each sub-area.
Maybe you just coined the term, maybe it should be available.
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 It's funny, that's what I thought when you said maybe.
Yeah, allowable, or allowable, available. A sounds, A is a good letter. So, but I think we need something different, maybe. Good.
All right, so, can I carry on?
Yeah, carry on.
I got up this morning and took a large breath.
You hit some of my stuff, Chris.
Yeah, on page 19, at the bottom of that, in the other, use is not specified above, where you're doing the maximum developments, et cetera. Again, we've got a reference to another section, 11.3, which we don't have, so we'll make sure that we cross the Ts and dot the Is there as to what that's going to define.
Yeah, and I think that was a little bit of a placeholder for us, because we've tried to think of everything we can, and I just mentioned this, for example, this hotel, it's not a bed and breakfast, and it isn't a big hotel, to track it, so that I think by the time we finish, there shouldn't, I think, there shouldn't be any others, we should know exactly.
Okay, so that one might be lifted out at that point.
Yeah, it's kind of like, huh, if we haven't thought about it, it's not like it hasn't been limited, but let's make sure we think about everything.
Yeah, there's a reference to a couple of sections there, though.
Yeah, very good point.
One comment at the top of the page, 1430, it seems like we've had some creep-up on the numbers there. I think originally, we were talking about 13--
13 and change.
13 and change.
Right, and what would, but if you, if you read the app, the original application, TNDs originally, there was some footnotes and some discussion about accessory units could also be, and we had a discussion with peer review and staff about it, and of course, you can't have more accessory units than you have units, and the idea that if it's mother-in-law apartment kind of thing, it's not a high percentage. So, a decision was made that a maximum of 10% of the units are imaginable to have those, which is where the 130 units on top of the 14, or, I'm sorry, is that right? Did I get that right?
No, that's right.
Yeah, 1,300 plus 10%.
The idea was that we were asked to cap total number of units, whether they were standalone, multifamily, or accessory, and since we hadn't put a number on accessory, we just decided with the assistance of staff and peer review, we would say, okay, there's going to be some 10% of the budget, and so, it was 1,300 units of standalone plus 10% more of accessory is the 130, getting to 1,430 total residential units.
Can I just ask a follow-up question to your question? So, does that mean that there will not be more than, that there will only be 1,430, including 10% that have accessory?
Yes.
So, you would not say, well, we'll do 1,430 single-family homes without any accessory?
That's correct.
Right.
Or multifamily without any accessory.
That's been my understanding.
Yeah, I think that's right, and that's something, that's one of those, you know, you, again, we've made some assumptions, we need to bring them out, that's what we're, we've been thinking.
Yeah, this is the time now.
Good question, Larry.
Yeah, that's the intention, yes, because we don't specifically state it.
So, would that be 1,300 homes with the accessory apartments included? It'd still be 1,300 dwellings.
Housing, dwelling units, right.
Right, is that a better way of--
Yeah, and that, and that of those--
Because the other 130 would be within the existing dwellings, right?
Well, they'd be in addition to, so, the accessory apartments, so, and typically, they, you know, so for example, let's say that there was a unit associated with a single-family house, up to 130 of those single-family homes could have an accessory unit, so if you went around and checked, all the individual ones, there'd be a total of 1,430.
Right, but I'm saying, within, within a dwelling, there could be an apartment.
Right.
So, it's still one dwelling.
It's actually counts for, well, in zoning, in zoning language, they call, they talk about it, that being two, and then from a building permit standpoint, it's like you've got to have separate exits and all that, so they count it as two.
Oh.
And it's probably reasonable to start thinking about that, too, in terms of things like parking, do you have enough parking for that, are there separate entrances? So, that's why you want to kind of be--
Okay.
You know, making sure that they don't just--
Realistic number.
Yeah, that you actually plan for it.
Get the terminology down.
Yeah.
I'm just picturing, you know, one, you know, home or unit with possibly two living spaces within it, that's the way I'm looking at it.
That's right, and then, that gives you the chance to go back in, because part of what is really interesting about these kinds of PUDs is there's a kind of a bookkeeping that occurs, how many units have gone in? So, and this was where we're talking about, so let's suppose now there's some single-family homes, and people have been, have bought their homes, and 200 of them come forward and say, we want to have an accessory apartment.
Right.
Uh-uh, you can't, well, how do you decide? Well, it's first come, first served, in a way, and the master development entity says, you can't even apply for that if we don't agree to it, because we don't want to have fights about all of that, so you keep a tally, and when you hit that 130, that's it, you're done.
You may also not all want it in one particular area, because again, of the parking and overcrowding, and so, that might have to be a little spelt out, too.
Exactly, so that you can control, everybody wants to control, you want it, it's good, but if it gets out of control, and then bootleg accessory apartments, I don't want to even think about it.
Right, right.
Because they never happen.
No, they don't. But that's why you want to manage--
I think we were at the--
The point where we'd finished the presentation. What Chris is doing, okay, Tom.
How do you define a unit? Because you've got types here, single-family, two-family, and multifamily, and I think you can have up to six units in a multifamily. So, does a single-family home count as one unit, and then the six-unit multifamily count as a second unit?
No, that's six units, you've just, so you get one of the--
Count per unit.
So, a six-family, I mean--
It's a six-family, it's not a unit.
Little condominium in a one-unit house, you've got seven units there.
What if you don't? What if you don't use it as condominium?
Wait, if it's rented?
If it has common ownership, and you rent it out, is that a unit?
It would still be, if it's housing, it would be, yeah...
It would still count it, I mean, it would still be a residential use.
Six.
It would be six?
You'd count it as six.
Okay.
It would be a commercial use.
I'm sorry?
It would be a commercial use. Over four units is commercial.
Because it's rented, you mean? No, I think it would still be classified as residential, and that's, again, something that we'd be able to clarify if there's a concern, but our attention would be, if it's occupied by a residential user, it's a residential unit.
And this doesn't anticipate dormitories or some of the common housing where...
Nursing homes.
Large, people, nursing homes are addressed.
But not within the units.
But not, right.
No, but it, but it does have an impact, for example, on the school district. If you're using, if your six-family counts as one...
It doesn't.
Okay. Just want to be clear about that.
Absolutely, yeah.
I guess that needs a clarification in the table.
Does the nursing home that has twenty beds count as one, or does it count as twenty?
It's not counted as a unit.
Yeah, it's not a residential use.
It's counted by a different measure, it's not within that fourteen thirty. That's a commercial facility, or maybe it's listed as, what's the category for that, Steve?
Well, it's an institutional, and it'd be number fifteen, assisted living, for example.
So, the one that's assisted living, though, for example, if we had, remember, we talked about, no, we talked about it at the master plan, talked about children who are, who have special needs that might need housing, assisted living-type housing. When we think about assisted living, we think about seniors, but there are, there's a population in this town of eighteen-to-thirty-year-olds that are going to need that kind of housing.
That's right.
So, they would fall under institutional, though not under the institutional section here, not under housing.
Yes, and the density for that use is calculable by square footage, not by unit.
Okay.
And if you start to think about, well, we were doing some calculations, we can bring some of these back, but I know that my in-laws live in an assisted living facility, and it's about, it would be about sixty thousand square feet, it's about sixty units up in Maine, and that would be about one-third of the total that you could put within the overall area to give you a sense of what, roughly speaking, those things are. So, three, and it's not huge by any means, it's a bit of somewhere this normal, you see, you see the assisted living kind of average thing, so it's like three of those.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris.
One more, because I think we're at the point where you took a break. You mentioned about a, sort of an oversight board that would be, you know, manage the PUD. I'm not sure whether, I guess the question, no, John's got questions, I saw his face at the time, whether that's permissible under the state statutes, because it would effectively be a land regulation board.
Yeah, I was frankly confused by that description as well, and so, let me try to help if I can. There's no, there's no intention to substitute for the planning board, and the idea here is to have some clerk of the works, if you will, that is keeping track for the developer of how many units are being consumed per proposal, how many square feet and density are being consumed per proposal, so that there's some clearing mechanism before it gets to staff and then before it gets to the planning board, that the proposed development within the PUD is within the tolerances that were approved as part of the master plan, so that by the time something gets to staff, even to staff, and then, of course, to the planning board, it's already been considered as within the density and totals that are allowed by the overall approval.
So, an auditing role, then?
It's not a replacement of any kind for the planning board, the planning board retains full authority to do subdivision, site plan review, there's no substitution.
Yeah, it was more a matter of whether the ordinance or the state regs allow us to do anything outside, you know, like that, that I was describing.
Yeah, that's really, it's just, it's sort of like, if someone owns a retail center, and there are four or five shops there, well, the, before one of those retail tenants can go forward to do an addition to their building, they've got to get permission from the landlord before they come in. That's part of, the applicant has to be someone who has standing about the overall development, and so, you always want to make sure there's somebody there who's saying, yeah, this is something that we think is...
The way I've understood that role, that the entity that has that is called the responsible developer, and so, and so, there is an entity that is responsible for, whether it's a certification or a clearing or whatever, that the application that's coming forward from a landowner within the PUD has been calculated as, as part of the totals. We're not going to present something to the, to the planning board that, for example, is going to throw that residential total over the fourteen thirty.
Yeah, and I guess that's one of the questions, I think you alluded to it, was that, you know, I guess the control mechanism beyond that legally, that if a, you know, an area of the PUD is bought by, you know, someone and developed as a building, if they come back to add to that, what's the redress for the town? Because there's, you know, there's other law outstanding that, you know, they could refer to, to say, well, no, I can do what I want to do with my land, and I should be allowed to do this.
And they'd be, again, you know, sort of what legal structure is around this to prevent something like that, they would be buying into or leasing into the PUD, knowing that there are constraints upon development consistent with the master plan and the densities and totals and units and so forth. And so, you would essentially receive a clearance from the master developer or the responsible developer to, to inform the board that, yes, this is consistent with what's been approved, and yes, this is viewed favorably by the developer of the PUD.
I guess this, again, in some of the legal documents, I think you were talking about having pro forma documents in, you know, as part of the PUD that would be leveraged as it got, you know, in operation, but I guess it would be of interest for us to understand what the constraints may be, you know, a town attorney's view of that legality and how solid that is for us.
We can certainly do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you bet.
Thank you.
So, Chris, Rick?
I'll do the stand.
Tom?
I'm all set.
John?
Yeah, so, a couple of questions, I think Chris actually did a very good job of asking some of them. From a ownership perspective of the land, from a development standpoint and developer standpoint, what percentage of the land is going to be retained by the development organization, either rented or leased?
I don't think that's been determined. I think that the ability to own, lease, or sell is a general ability that is intended, but I think some of these comments are pointing out that the controls will persist regardless.
Yeah, I don't have an answer for that. I know that whatever land is within the PUD would be governed by the master plan, and that regardless of who owns it or controls, that they'd be subject to the same rules, but what the specific intentions of the current owners are, I couldn't break that down for you right now.
Going, going back to the fourteen thirty units, okay, if I, if I did the math real quick, you know, if I took the maximum number of units that you have proposed there, and I understand it's a maximum number, and not going up at all, I end up with, you know, point four-two acres per unit. Okay, so I look at that, and I then take into consideration all your other uses and plans that you have for the land. To me, the numbers start getting a little, little crazy. Okay, so if I, and I understand maximum units, and even if I go and use the original numbers, we were talking about the thirteen hundred units, the numbers still are difficult to swallow when I start looking at the, the use potentials and the roads and so forth and the lands that cannot be used. So, I'm struggling with a couple of things with that said. Firstly, when I start looking at, obviously, that, that number of units, I start looking at a hospital with three hundred beds, I start looking at an assisted living nursing home facility with two hundred and fifty thousand gross square feet, I start adding these things up, and I start to not understand how we're going to pack all that in, okay, because it's, it's difficult to fathom. All right? And I'm looking at page nineteen, by the way, for your reference. So, I think what would be benefit, would benefit all that are involved moving forward is if you can do two things for me. One, give me an example of what a three hundred-bed hospital looks like within our area, and I don't want to go to Atlanta, I don't want to go to, you know, LA or wherever, you know, give me my closest one that looks like a three hundred-bed hospital, Lahey Clinic up in Manchester, I don't know. Okay, so, that's, that's my, my first question. For all of these uses, I'd like to see examples.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and I think that's fair, because I, you know, most of the pictures and the documentations, you know, of the documentation that we've seen, I've seen a lot of, and I haven't really seen a lot of progression as far as that is concerned, okay? And then, secondly, a couple of things in the document that are pointed out, five-story buildings, and no more than fifty feet and so forth.
Right.
So, I struggle with that as well, because when I, when I started thinking about it and reading the document, I started thinking about, where is there a five-story building? Okay? And I really, I'm running out of where I can find one. I might be able to find one in Manchester, but I'm trying to find one that would, would be applicable to our surroundings, that looks like a five-story building. And I have to go, actually, into Massachusetts, I believe, to find a five-story building. Okay, so I need to understand what a five-story building is going to look like sitting on top of the hill in Londonderry, and why do we need to do that? When there's nothing, to me, it doesn't even seem like there's anything around. So, again, I'm looking for some concrete examples of how we're going to fit all, all these, these things that you're identifying into the space, and I understand the maximums, but at the same time, I'm struggling with that.
Yeah, I think this is, I think this is very reasonable, and I think there are several parts to this. I think having examples of buildings, but I think it'd be helpful if we put it in context. Where is this a hospital like this that's in a neighborhood? Where are office buildings here that are connected? And part of the idea of a PUD and part of the idea of the sub-areas is that everything doesn't get spread evenly, that there are areas where there's more compact development and efficiencies because of parking, and there are areas where you have much lower densities, that you're really mixing this up very much. But I do think, from our point of view, two pieces, one is, we're thinking about bringing these examples, we've been talking about some, some ones that we think are appropriate, but then, when you get to look at the site design and the building design standards to have, and we will get to that, a way of really seeing how these building blocks build up, so that you can see that the overall effect over six hundred acres and the open space to balance it all balances out. So, we, we understand that we need to get to those topics and in the order of events that will be coming up pretty soon. But these are very good questions.
So, I want to make sure we are going to get examples.
Yes, the answer is yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm good for now.
I'm good for now.
Okay. Lynn, so one of the basic things I still get hung up on is the east and west component of the, of the entire development. And, you know, I understand the little spit of land between the two crossing ninety-three, but I just see them as being two separate entities. I mean, they look different on the maps, I get a different vibe for each one. I just, I think, you know, from an overall planning perspective, I think we're, it's a big project for us, it's a big project for the town, and I think looking at both pieces as a single entity is just too big. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks about that, but, you know, I look at that, every time I look at that map, I just get hung up on it. And I don't have a question to ask, it's more of a statement at this point in time.
As a, as a, as a question, back to staff, really, the, the argument for a contiguous piece of land with, as a single project was brought up. As a definition of a PUD, can you clarify for me and the board and the public as to a boundary demarcation point and what that, how that is declared for a PUD, for instance, a roadway and so forth? So, if, if, I think, I think what I, from what I understand, that, that a project is one contiguous piece of land, not separated by any roadway or, or major boundary, is that correct?
No.
Because we have, the definition is in our...
The PUD ordinance right here.
It's in the PUD plan.
The PUD ordinance itself speaks to this.
Yep.
It's right there.
One hundred, one hundred acres of contiguous land, right?
Right.
Yes.
If you keep going, it discusses the bisecting roadway.
Okay, I've got it, are you ready?
Okay, please, yeah, and I think it's important to make sure that we all understand that.
Okay, the minimum is a hundred acres, where portions of the tract are separated by a road, roadway, road right-of-way, utility, waterway, or other like element, the land shall be deemed contiguous unless the intervening feature is of such a nature that the planning board determines that the land could not function effectively as a PUD, and I think the development team is about to, or will show you how the intent is that they develop as a unit. The other thing is that, this is, the advantage with the PUD is that for the entire six hundred and three acres, you know now exactly what to expect and ultimately what the impacts of that overall development is going to be if it were developed incrementally, lot by lot. You're not going to have any idea in the end what can be absorbed or what's going to happen there, so I think that's the advantage of looking at it as one piece.
Well, if we didn't have that single piece of land connecting the two pieces together, would we be having this discussion? That's my number-one question, is that piece just seems to exist just to tie the two pieces together? And I look at the eastern side of the highway is not existing if exit four A doesn't happen, and I know exit four A is a discussion that's probably going to be going on for another ten or fifteen years in the state, but I think it's a big assumption to make that it's going to happen at this point in time.
Mike?
Yes? Can I help you clarify a little bit, there's a point of law? My name's Mike, I'm the town's attorney. I think the important thing to look at is not to focus on that strip of land that connects it to them, because it doesn't matter whether that strip of land is there. The ordinance itself states that where portions of land are separated by a road, that's one of the, that's one of the possibilities, which means that strip of land doesn't have to connect them, they could be completely separated. So, whether it's separated by a road, a road right-of-way, a utility waterway, or another like element, and here's what's important, the language of the, of the ordinance then says, the land shall be deemed contiguous, not may be deemed contiguous, but shall be deemed contiguous. As a matter of law, in New Hampshire and in most other places, the word shall means it's mandatory, okay? It's not permissive, it's mandatory, so it shall be deemed contiguous unless the intervening feature is of such a nature that the planning board determines that the land could not function effectively as a PUD. So, in other words, there's a presumption in the ordinance where you have contiguous pieces of land, that it will be treated as a single entity unless the planning board finds that it could not, not that could be one or the other, but that it actually could not function effectively as a single PUD. And that's the context this discussion has to be had in, okay?
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. So, I'll let the lawyer quiet me down, but I will say one thing to John, I looked up the Elliott Hospital, Elliott Hospital's two hundred and ninety-six beds.
Two ninety-six, Elliott?
Yeah, so, it's roughly equivalent.
That's a pretty good, that's a pretty good example, that's pretty close.
But your expectation isn't that it's going to spread out, your expectation is that it's going to go up?
No more than fifty feet.
Right?
Fifty feet's the limiting height.
Fifty-foot building in Londonderry.
Well, we'll take a look, I think these are very valid questions, and I think the test is, can it be fitted into the location, the edges, and the other kinds of things that will occur and set standards? That's the question.
We have no issue providing examples, we just want to make sure that they're accurate before we provide them.
I understand, thank you.
Yeah, we'll be looking at that.
A couple of follow-up questions to John and to Lynn. To the building of that size, are we planning to have the Londonderry Fire Department ensure that, you know, they can address a building of that scale?
That's going to be part of this discussion also.
Yeah, because, you know, there was a big fire just recently down in Massachusetts, and the fire department couldn't handle it.
Yeah.
And it tore through the building down in Chelmsford.
They're all relevant considerations, and to the extent we already have that information, we'll package it up and deliver it. To the extent that something's changed or we need to revisit that information, we'll do that as well. They're good questions.
And to Lynn's comment regarding the two areas, that area does very much hinge on exit four, and I would argue that there is a fairly significant boundary between the two that would make them logically very different in character.
that would make them logically very different in characteristic. Not in saying that, you know, I would say that the board would force that issue, but to Lynn's point, I think that there is a definite need to make that piece, you know, effectively a phase, because it's contingent on the exit 4 construction and getting done.
Well, I think, I think these, this is very both timely and appropriate, again, as a comment, because as we're doing the transportation impact studies, if you don't have significant access to that area, you can't do a significant amount of development. But on the other hand, planning for access like that provides different kinds of opportunities for significant potential benefit for everybody. So that's the notion of planning and coordinating it and making sure that the connections that occur, whether they be between the exits, within an exit, across Pillsbury, are planned in advance, the left hand and the right hand always know what's happening.
The other part I'd add is none of this substitutes for the successive phases of the planning process. So for example, let's say the PUD did not exist and somebody came in with a land use application for what's represented on the east side of the highway. They would be required to file the same site plan application that will be required under the PUD, and there'll be the same sensitivity and impact testing then as now. And someone, as an applicant, who cannot sustain that the development is either able to be mitigated or tolerated, or pick your word, handled properly, this board would be able to say no.
No, I understand, we still got the site plan aspect from, you know, the master plan's effectively a zoning document, and then we've got to deal with site plans as developments come into this. It just, to echo Lynn's point, it just feels like that that's a completely and utterly separate phase, and which makes it a lot easier to eat, to work through the scale of the project.
Well, we have treated it as a separate subarea, and we have studied the subarea for the purposes of the various focuses, focus discussions that are coming forward. For example, there are some uses that are permitted in that area under the table in tonight's documents and some uses that are not. When it comes to the transportation analysis that's to be delivered next month, you'll see that that area and the build-out of that area was considered as well. And so we're testing these various possible impacts to make sure that they're tolerated or mitigated as the project can move forward. And again, you've got that site plan and subdivision catch mechanism to say, you know, it either can be handled or it can't be handled, and maybe there are going to be instances down the road where the planning board needs to deliver a denial to somebody because it can't be tolerated, and we understand that that's a possibility.
I guess my main concern is the acreage over there contributes to the maxima of the different developments allowed.
Yes.
And if something like exit 4A doesn't happen, would that drive additional development on the west side of the road?
Well, that's, yeah, and that's, maybe we can get into that discussion, sort of partly is a really good way to put it, is that it doesn't mean that if the 4A doesn't happen and the eastern side there doesn't occur, that all the development that's planned up there could flow to the other side. No, it's within limits so that you don't overload. It's like keeping the boat in balance and shifting the cargo around a little bit. It's okay to shift it some, but not too much. And that's what the whole idea of, let's set up these compartments, and let's make sure that the amount of shifting between compartments doesn't ever get out of control.
The reason I said partly is because there is a chart we're getting to after our break that will put some limitations on what each subarea can accommodate. And, you know, is it possible that an area would be more heavily developed because one area is thought to be unavailable for a particular reason? Yes, I could see that as a possibility, but there are still caps within the overall density to make sure, number one, that it's not overloaded, and number two, that we're able to study some element of how that density can move.
Chris, based upon that chart, I think it's on page 27, so the area in question, WC 12, you have a maxima on that of 800, is that correct?
For which category are you referring?
For the residential.
Yeah.
All right. So I haven't done my math at looking the other, the summation of the other areas, but to Lynn, those areas would be capped by those numbers on the western side.
And the idea is that if imaginably the maximum was reached over in the eastern side, what's called WC 12, well, then you can't develop so much on the other side. And because these things are linked by roads and other impacts, et cetera, that gives you an overall sense of, you know, overall what will occur, and there's some limitations. You can't put all the eggs in one basket or all the...
It's part of an effort to contain the development within any particular portion or subarea, as we've called them, so that exactly what you're describing does not happen in a way that can't be tolerated. It's an attempt to essentially prescreen the possibility that somebody will come in with an application at site plan or subdivision that needs to be denied. If you're within those subarea tolerances and the master plan has been well-conceived at the outset, there's a likelihood that you're going to be okay. The board still has the right to say, "We don't think so."
Right.
I think it's something we need to discuss further, because if you add those numbers up, you're getting, you're pretty close to the 1,300 excluding the eastern side, so...
1,435.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, how it all fits together. I think we're ways from there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're getting ahead, we're not that section of the...
I'm all set, thank you. Thank you.
Laura?
Just two questions. And first of all, thank you, this is a lot of information, and I thought you presented it in a pretty readable way, and the diagrams, I thought, sort of cross-referenced logically, I had an easy time getting through it. So thank you, I thought it made a lot of sense.
Until you hear the rest.
Absolutely. I apologize if you answered this while I stepped out of the room, but in the eastern section, I thought I remembered at one point that if 4A didn't happen, that was pretty well undevolvable. Am I mistaken? Can you develop off of Ash Street or Londonderry Road? Can you, can any of that be developed before 4A goes in?
I mean, I'm not a technician, but I think the answer I've understood throughout the discussions is a certain amount of development could occur, there are certain capacities there that could be utilized, but what's being projected here, no.
But the extent of what's being projected?
Correct.
You're talking about the entirety of it?
Correct. Could it be built out in full? I doubt it.
Okay.
Could you have incremental development waiting for that event to occur? Sure.
Well, just in terms of looking at everything as a whole, I think it might be good to keep it in mind as a whole if there's no guarantee that that's going to remain dormant until 4A comes along, because there's just so much business to the east of this parcel that if eventually people find a way to drive some of that dairy business into Londonderry, I think that's a great thing. And if we're prepared for it by considering it almost part of this package, although it is a big bite certainly, that it might really benefit us in the long run, since that's mostly the more commercial-industrial kind of development that we're talking about up in that section. And I had another question, I forgot. But go ahead, I'm sure I'll have time to answer this.
There'll be time, there'll be time, don't worry. Lisa?
Hi. Okay. So on page 17, you don't have to answer these questions now, this is more observations, and it kind of falls in line with some of your requests earlier. It would be very helpful for me to understand some specifics, and I know you defined accessory dwelling unit as this mother-in-law thing, and I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm amiss on that. So it would be very helpful for me, and I believe the public as well, to understand what you're referring to in those categories like that. Also on hospital, you know, how is that different from, say, an urgent care that we currently have in town? I mean, where does that fall under institutional, or do you not intend to have something like that?
Yeah.
Where, you talked about office building space, how's that different from just a smaller-sized office building? Down below in your footnote in number five, you talk about where the underlying, in parentheses, where the underlying zoning is not GB? I don't know what GB means.
That's Gateway Business District over by...
I didn't know what that... Sorry, I didn't understand that.
That's a carryover from the existing ordinance. None of the land that's within the PUD acreage is currently zoned GB.
Under that, okay, thank you. Parking structure, I noticed parking structure was up under civic uses, but what about if a private building wanted to have a parking garage? Where would that fit?
This is a really good question. We asked the same thing, yeah.
You know what I'm saying, if an office building wants to have a parking garage for its employees to, you know, to shield from snow and whatnot, where would that fall?
Yeah.
So those were some of my observations on that page, and to Chris's point earlier, you know, I was a little alarmed to see the PUD column and have basically have a blanket page there, but it sounds like that's going to be addressed.
Yeah.
That's lifted from the ordinance as well.
Yeah.
On page 17, you're referring to.
Yeah. Okay, so, but if we get to page 20, the last, the last paragraph, particularly the end of the last sentence, I'm left with trying to understand what this means. You talk about the land north of Ash Street and east of 93, and again, we're talking about the eastern, the eastern portion there that we were discussing. It's a large area that can be planned in many ways, and because of the prospect of future access along the planned exit 4A, Folsom Road connector, significant flexibility within an overall development limit emerged as the land use concept.
Mm-hmm.
And when I hear a statement like that, it's significantly vague enough for me to say, oh, anything goes. So is it, will we see more specifics as time goes on? I mean, I've heard some of your comments related to 4A and what would and would make sense given that 4A going through.
Yeah, I think the idea there is that because, when you have a large piece of land that has almost direct access to a highway without intervening roads, there are a lot of different uses that the market might support within that area. And it's unlike the other side where we've got WC 11 and WC 7, where there are so many edges that wind in around existing roads and single-family areas. So if you look back at the various studies and the charrette and the different sketches that were done, lots of different ideas kept emerging. Well, gee, what if it was more like this? Well, maybe it's more commercial, well, maybe it's more retail, well, maybe it's a mix of retail and residential. And what we were learning through that is that there are a lot of good solutions, not an infinite number, but there are, it's a little bit more flexible just because of that characteristic.
So your thought is the potential is there for more options than...
For more options, yeah. But now they say, the key is to set up the rules so that all the options that emerge are all good ones.
Okay.
So that's why, if you, if we start looking at the development maximum, you could imagine it going in a, you know, in a different direction, depending upon how the market goes, and because really the edges and that access are really a special circumstance, unusual.
Okay.
But the, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Now, I realize you probably can't say too much further on that at this time, so. Page 22.
Yeah.
At this point, I found myself, having seen the words, the exception to square-foot maxima being words like relocation and reconstruction of existing buildings, can you, it's mentioned several times, so can you give me a couple of examples of buildings in the area and their square footage that might be relocated or reconstructed?
Yeah, there are a number of buildings over there, like the Market Basket, for example, and the assumption had been in the, in the previous documents, the assumption had been that, well, we're looking at new development, square footage in addition to what those are there, and the question was, well, what if you took, not that there's a proposal there, but if you took an existing building and you moved it or you added to it? The idea is the square footage persists, but not necessarily that existing building. So if you tore down an existing building and built another one that had the same square footage in another location, you're still allowed to do that, as long as it meets all the rules and regulations.
But it wouldn't count toward the square foot maximum?
Over a long period.
Or what?
Well, as long as it stays within the square footage of what the existing buildings are, you can't add more square footage, but if you can, you can move it around.
Okay.
That's the idea. And it, and so, you know, you can imagine someone says, okay, well, I've got an existing building, and I want to tear half of it down and add some more square footage, well, they won't do it if they don't have the right to do it, right? And all they're doing is improving that square footage, and you want people to improve what they have.
Okay, so the old Market Basket building, I'm assuming you're talking about the old one, not the nice new one you just built?
We'll keep that one for a little while.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I want to make sure, I'm not suggesting that the new Market Basket is moving. I'm not suggesting that.
So I, you know, I get that's a good example, but, you know, where else within here are we talking? Are we talking like the, there's an existing structure I know on the, where the Apple or...
That's another, that's another good example.
Those types of things, is that what you're talking about? Because there's not too many structures that I'm...
That's another good example.
There just aren't that many.
That structure could be repurposed for some other use, maybe a civic use, and we wouldn't want that to count against our totals because it's existing today.
It's existing, okay.
Yeah.
It's not, it wouldn't be new development, it would be repurposing of existing.
Okay, repurpose, all right.
Yeah, that's the idea, that existing is existing even if you renovate it or relocate over time, you know.
All right, I mean, that's fair, okay.
The basic bookkeeping.
So, okay, then I'll answer that question. If I go to page 29.
Yeah.
Do you want to clarify something?
Yeah, I think that's the basic idea, is that over a very long period, the whole idea is this lasts a really long time, and you're building a place. If someone takes something down and puts something else up that's better and, you know, replaces it, they should be able to do it. Otherwise, you know, it's like grandfathering the total area, not just individual buildings so that, but we know what the total's always going to be.
Okay.
I think that's the basic idea.
On page 29, I'm curious, I see the blue circles that indicate intersection capacity and operations to be managed by design.
So if I, if I would, if you would mind, maybe what we could do is we could go through the next chunk of the presentation, and then that'll explain a little bit why this is here and what it's about.
All right.
Because it's a little bit of a preview, we thought we'd leave at the end of this as a preview to set up some of the, raise some questions, but as a topic for the next meeting, which is going to focus on that.
Okay, thank you.
Be good.
Scott? This might have been answered, I was just reading through this, so I might have missed some of what Lisa just asked, but on the civic uses, why is there, why is it always no limit? Because it looks like, under what you have as your nomenclature for civic uses, there's a lot of different things that can be classified as civic uses. And my thought was, when I added up the amount of residential units, you've got close to, like, 2,557 units. So if you find that one of the parcels that you develop first, you get more residential uses, you obviously won't use that, those residential spaces in another area, and you'll maybe designate it more towards civic use?
I think that might be an area where we'll want to introduce some limitations on some of the subcategories within that use, and sure enough, your review team has raised that as a question. Like, for example, religious facilities, no reason not to have them, but certainly there may be some limitation as to what can be tolerated from various impact perspectives.
Right.
Contrast that with community center or parking structure. You're not necessarily going to want a limit on those uses, you're going to want them to be consistent with the other uses that they're supporting. Like, for example, you may have a community center that's going to support a particular area of development, and you would want that center to be sized for that role in supporting that area. You wouldn't want it to have a limitation of its own that may turn out to have no relation to what its use is for or what it's to be supporting. Same goes for parking structures. You would want a parking structure to be sized appropriately to park the number of cars that are going to need to use it. You wouldn't just want to arbitrarily now say, no more than 200 spaces or 100 spaces or however the sizing may work out, without knowing what role you want it to play. And so that became the challenge in trying to come up with a density figure for that, but I, but it is a good question, and particularly good with respect to an example like religious facilities, where we probably should come up with some sort of a limitation the way we have for other uses.
Notwithstanding that regulating religious institutions is a challenge in its own, right.
Walking into the constitutional implications.
So you can see, it actually raised a number of interesting questions that, among ourselves as well, that we really want to get to, including the way that you... as well, that we really want to get to, including the way that you, like structured parking, there's structured parking that fits in and is appropriate, and there's some that isn't, and has a lot to do with how it's designed and where it sits, as opposed to the number of spaces. So these are things we're going to be looking at, very good point.
Yeah, there is federal law that covers religious institutions, that you have to locate them, you know, you, you really can't restrict them too much. Basically, federal law has preempted state law, which preempts local law. So we had that, I think that was enacted back in the year two thousand. So it's kind of like cell towers, you know, you can't, you know, you can limit them and control them, but you can't say, you know, no to them.
We should be clear that we have not looked into that to date, and we're not making any kind of statement on that issue. We, we can look into it because it's a good question.
Because as it is now, someone could locate a church anywhere, and, you know, we can probably do a, well, this is residential, it'd have to be a site plan for it, but, you know, we can't say no because it's a church.
So something that says limit determined by design?
Yeah, I think that the idea is that, um, it's imaginable to me that, uh, what you're doing, um, a, a specific example that came to mind was one of the first projects I ever worked on, which was a church down in Cape Cod. And the Cape Cod Commission felt that the steeple was too high and too close to the harbor, and the church felt differently. And it ended up, if they would move it back a couple hundred feet, everybody was happy. And that church is there today, uh, by going through a design approach that looked at, well, what is this building really doing, and does it fit into the neighborhood? And, um, we did, for example, exempt in terms of that fifty-foot height, which is, you know, heights, uh, and, and not stories necessarily, but steeples are often higher than that. What would be in New England if all of the steeples were too, you know, short? So it's actually a little complicated to start thinking about where you put things and how you put it together, and that's why we want to get into those standards and say, where are the lots, how do they fit, what works, and what's the proportion of these to make a really good community? It's, it's, uh, it's, it's interesting.
Anything else, Scott? Okay, Maria?
Uh, yeah, I just, I just, one thing, um, just to try to, um, clarify, especially for the people at home, um, the, the first phase is going to be the village-like effect, mixed use, um, in the WC one area. Am I correct with that?
Not, I, not necessarily. Not necessarily. I think that, uh, that may be, you know, a goal, but, um, so far, we haven't made particular commitments in.
Okay. So, so it could, development, we could be getting site plans in and for any one of these areas to start?
Yeah, or, or several, that, that could happen.
At the same time?
Right. And that's why we think it's really important that the notion of what kind of roadway network goes in, and how the utility's being done, are all those things okay before you start to, in, in, sort of normal zoning with lots of little things happening, it's really hard to figure out how to coordinate that. So the infrastructure, the roads, all those things, before you start receiving multiple proposals, and knowing that is there being phased, whatever the phasing is, they're building up to an increment that won't get out of control.
Okay, so when we talk about phasing, we're talking about there could, there's going to be a certain amount of development, development in each, um, each of these sections phased in over time, like, in other words, you can have some in WC one, some in WCA. I just want to understand, so that people can understand how this is going to go.
I, I think the answer is yes, that you could see incremental development in any of the phases at the outset and progressing forward. I think your, your initial question of, is it most likely to start in WC one, WC one? I think the answer is yes. And I think the reason the answer is yes is primarily because there's an existing infrastructure there that makes it easy for people who want to come to the PUD to bring forward a site plan and say, there isn't a whole lot of externality that I need to mitigate here, because there's a lot that already exists.
Right.
Would it prevent somebody from coming in, uh, with a proposal in another area? No, just the way your current zoning ordinance wouldn't prevent somebody from coming in in any particular part of town. But there would be more to mitigate for that applicant, and so there would be a natural disincentive to be either, you know, I don't want to say to be the first, but to be the person that's biting off a large chunk of mitigation obligation, whether it comes to traffic, or, or sewer line, or whatever the, the infrastructure item might be.
Okay. So for people at home to understand, um, development can happen in any one of these areas?
Development proposals can happen.
Development proposals can happen in any one of these areas, uh, at any given time.
It could. I think that the, the normal course of events, of course, is in the same way that the WC one and, um, uh, in the areas that the W one GL, uh, because the infrastructure leads the way, you've got to be able to drive there, there has to be these utilities. And one of the things when we get into open space, the idea that the open space networks and being able to walk and connect these places is also going to be really important. So when we look at phasing, we want to make sure that you're not getting all the development, and then at the very end, okay, we better put a path in here, right?
Right.
But the, the tendency is to, and that's why planning that infrastructure, planning the open space and doing it so incrementally along the way, it always makes sense.
Right.
Seems to us to be one of the really key tricks here.
And is that why you're also saying that you want WC twelve to be a part of this, because of that same reason?
That's right. And, 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 you know, back to your point, it's, it's good planning, um, the opportunity to have, um, better infrastructure and access and a significant amount of land that could be a number of different things, uh, and, uh, within a total, you know, a total picture, by being able to plan that, that's not determining what will happen, but planning what could happen is, is what, um, what this is about.
Right, okay. It's, it's, I think it's very important for people at home, especially to understand that. You know, I, in my mind, of course, everything that I've read, I always have it in my mind, WC one GL, that, that's going to fill up first, and, but that's not, that's really not the case. It could be in any of these areas, like you said, there can be development proposals.
And I would respond to that as probable, but not required or definite.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Maria?
No, that's it.
Okay.
For now.
I guess I'm still on page twenty-five, but I'll save that for.
Okay.
I just want to note, this is regards to the cemetery that abuts on the northern part of, uh, uh, the property. And I received a letter, this is, uh, going a year ago, it was January thirtieth, two thousand and twelve, it's from the trustees, the trust fund, kind of want to read it in the record, so we don't forget about it anyway. Dear Mr. Rugg, dating back to the initial Woodmont Commons Charrette, members of Londonary Trustees and Trust Funds have been in communication with the Woodmont Planning Team regarding acquisition of a small area of land in which to expand Londonary's Pillsbury Cemetery. As you may be aware, the cemetery abuts the former Woodmont Orchard presently under discussion as a Woodmont Commons Plan Unit Development. The trustees have received verbal agreement from the project advocates that lanes directly abutting the cemetery may be dedicated to the town for future expansion. I mean, uh, land, pardon me. Land directly abutting the cemetery may be dedicated to the town for future expansion. We're requesting that the Planning Board advocate for fulfillment of verbal agreements prior to the adoption of the PUD master plan. To meet cemetery needs for the organized plot placement and traffic flow, the trustees are requesting an area of no less than three hundred feet of frontage, southerly from the current lot line, and four hundred and eighty-five feet westerly, and there's a graphic that's attached. This requested area will allow construction of a much-needed second access point to the Pillsbury Cemetery, and will allow lots and roads to be constructed in alignment with existing conditions. In sum, the area that will allow the cemetery to grow from three hundred and forty-one double plots currently to over one thousand double plots, this will easily accommodate the future needs.
Lovely thought.
Yeah, we don't really like to think about it, but it's something that's part of, part of planning, we have to plan for it, unfortunately. Cemeteries are not permitted within the Plan Unit Development, a lot split will be necessary to transfer the land. And signed for Bob Zara, Chair, and Kent Allen Sexton. I just want to make sure that, uh, the team is aware of this anyway.
Yes, definitely aware of the request. I think there's been subsequent correspondence more recently than that as well, that attached to a, a little plat, a diagram of, of the particular area they're looking for. You'll see in all the maps that we keep circulating that there's a carve-out of area outside of the PUD for this dedication, and that's because cemetery is not a use recognized within the PUD.
Right.
And not something that we're advocating be included within the PUD.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that if you can accommodate their request.
Yeah, there was a, I think that, that the phrase you hit was, prior to adoption of the PUD.
Yes, yes.
It would be our humble request that it be contemporaneous with the approval of the PUD.
Yes, okay.
Don't think you want to have a discussion of increased cemetery while you're also discussing a hospital being installed.
Hospital, you know, assisted living, you know, so we get, you know, some people in there.
Yeah.
It does require a harmonious mixture of uses.
Okay, uh, I'll open to the, the public, if anyone has any questions or so forth, you can cover the microphone right here. Jack had his hand up first, Anne, so, uh, you go, you go next.
Mr. Chairman?
Letha, I just ask one more question?
Oh, okay, Letha, pardon me, I forgot, so I'm sorry.
Pardon me. I'm sorry, just one, one quick question.
Sure.
I just want to verify an assumption. On, on page seventeen, I noticed the mention of a private school potential, but up in civic uses, I don't, I don't see, um, a school. So can I assume from that, that the residents of the fourteen-hundred-and-thirty units, dwellings, um, it's your intent then for those children potentially to be absorbed into the Londonary School System?
I don't know that we have a particular intention as to what student goes to what school. If you go to the matrix, and again, this is part of what's coming up next, if you go to the matrix on page twenty-five, I think it is, of what you're looking at, you'll see there is a category for private school down in the business uses, and there are subareas where that's been listed as a permissible use.
But you haven't listed a public school under civic uses, so that's my, that's my question, is, is it your intent then to not seek a?
We don't, I, I think, in terms of the planning to date, and, and we'll be addressing what the, the fiscal impacts and, and other implications are in a future meeting, but we haven't projected a need for an additional school, and we're not aware of any plans that, that town has had, and looking at their projections for a need for a school here. It raises the question, should the town decide that it wants to have a municipal facility like that here in the future, for some reason, how you would accomplish that? And that's something, that's a good question, but there's no, we, we haven't seen any need or, and we're not aware of any plans for new school, a new public school.
This is back to the comment of, do we have fire trucks that can get to the top of buildings, and do we have infrastructure to support the services? It's been our understanding that the public schools can accommodate the type of, of new student demand that this development would put forward, uh, but we'll confirm that once again.
Yeah, I just don't want to assume.
Yeah, no, it's not an assumption, we've had those discussions.
Okay, thank you.
What's it? Jack, you got the floor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jack Falvey from Twenty-two Courtland. Lynn's comment on the, the visibility of this, um, project is interesting because graphically and visually, I'd like to take issue with one element, and that is, all of the graphics show a strip of land connecting these two parcels, east and west on ninety-three. And in fact, the PUD boundaries say that, that Interstate ninety-three is part of the PUD. And I think those, that strip is an artistic license, if you will. It doesn't reflect reality. That's state land in there, that's not part of the PUD, and it's not physically connected, those two elements. So I think taking that strip out of all of the maps would clarify it both for the public and for the Planning Board, that, that this issue that Lynn brings up is a valid one visually, and he has a feeling that these don't connect, but all of the maps show that they do connect. And I think those maps are a little bit of artistic license, and I would ask that they be corrected. Good, thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Yes?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, in a way, as a regulatory plan, um, we've been thinking of this like a zoning map. Town zoning spans across streets and roads and even highways. And so, um, in thinking about how to represent the regulatory framework, the idea is if there's a zone on both sides of the, of a street, you would represent it as a zoning map, and then the question begins to be, well, when you institute the PUD as a new kind of zone, what do you do about where it goes across the street, just like your other zones? If you look at your zoning map, it's just got big, big areas, so we're just trying to be consistent with what your zoning mapping is about. That's basically it.
Okay, um, Anne, you were next.
Anne Champa, twenty-eight Wedwood. Now, to go along with that vein, we were talking about exit four eight going east only. On the western side of it, um, on Trolley Car, there's a sound barrier preventing any western, um, um, exit, and that's what was proposed, um, all along. There's no, uh, western access from exit four A. So there basically isn't any physical way to get between the east side and the west side of the development. So I wouldn't, looking at it myself, I wouldn't consider Route ninety-three just be a typical road separating one side of the street from another, because there is no physical access. There's a state sound barrier proposed for Trolley Car, separating physically the development from the east side and the west side. How does that now jive with, um, the connection, that physical connection that, um, the PUD needs to be contiguous, I guess, one contiguous parcel? If physically you can't get there from?
Yeah, I think we have to look at our own ordinance, how that's, that's written, not what it looks like or anything.
Mr. Chair, would it be who was to ask the board's consensus, consensus whether or not we believe that it is a contiguous piece of property and that it should be handled as one PUD? Only because, um, the ordinance says that it shall be unless we deem it shouldn't be?
Well, I think we're going to have a.
Is that too early of a discussion?
It's premature, because I think it's up to the applicant to demonstrate. If they haven't demonstrated, and I think it's going to take a few iterations of this to, because to me, there's going to be a relationship, and there, there can be. And then you have to look at our ordinance also, which our attorney pointed, pointed out, so, I, there has to be a real good reason. In other words, you might have to defend it in court, so.
Okay, thank you.
You have to look at it that way, you know, it's just not, I feel this way, or I feel that way. Like any of our decisions have to be, you know, hopefully defensible in courts.
Right, I just want to throw that up.
Just, I think, and we'll be able to touch a little bit on this particular topic, instead of, and similar to your question, but towards the end, in terms of basically how the infrastructure ties these pieces together, um, if we, when we complete the, the, the segment, so for example, Pillsbury Road itself would connect, which, and the bridge exists today, is, would be a connection right now, and there are many ways of getting around between these. And part of our job is to show how that would happen, and that the impacts of what happens, this is the left hand needs to know what the right hand is doing, or you can't plan the roads and the streets and the, and intersections that are there today. So, but we'll show you how we're going to address that a little bit, and then we'll be addressing that in detail, uh, at the next meeting. But, uh, but we'll get a little bit to that at the end of this particular slideshow.
Do you mean that there's, um, it's basically contiguous between Pillsbury and Ash Street now, because the properties are on opposite sides of ninety-three?
I'm not sure I follow, I think.
If we're looking on Pillsbury Road and Ash Street.
Right.
You own the left side of, um, property on the left side of ninety-three, and also on the right side of ninety-three.
I think what they said, Anne, is that they're going to be able to show that they can connect this, to this property through Pillsbury, even if they don't have four A.
Right.
That's correct.
Right, that's what I, I was just defining that.
Down here.
Why, are there two connections in the sound barrier?
I, I, you know, I just wanted to bring up the sound barrier thing, and I had thought about the connection between, uh, Woodmont Orchard's part on the left, and then the industrial area on the right. I can understand that.
Yeah, I think we're getting into a little bit theoretical stuff.
Well, it was just brought up about the other connector.
What ifs, because there's nothing, there's nothing cast at all, so.
I do know that these connections are part of the traffic, uh, work that's been done for the February meeting, and the ability of, uh, traffic generation and what exists today to flow around is part of that study.
Anything else, Anne?
Pardon?
Anything else?
Yes, all right, you mentioned something. I just want to, um, point out on page four, um, it talks about the town's PUD ordinance, section two-point-eight, has been established to promote flexibility in a large-scale development. two-point-eight has been established to promote flexibility in a large-scale development through the establishment of comprehensive, integrated, and detailed plan in contrast to the constraints associated with conventional zoning. But as a nearby resident of the project, that flexibility given to developers equals a vagueness. Even though numbers and uses are attached to the master plan document, a long list of approved uses in a large expanse of area is not really detailed, especially if areas within or abutting that expanse are considered sensitive in nature by current residents. For example, consider the northwest portion of the plan, the area near the Pillsbury and the Hill cemeteries. Subareas WC eight, which is seventy acres, five residences per acre there. WC nine, which is thirty-two acres, and it has two residents per acre. And WC ten, which is seventeen acres, which has approximately six units of residences per acre. They have a long list of approved uses and dense and varied allowable uses. These areas are at the highest elevation point on the property, and I consider their location, abutting the town cemeteries, the most sensitive in all of the development. A cemetery is just not, is not just a property to be dealt with. It is an area that must be respected and given space. It should be a calm resting spot, a reflective area, a place where relatives can grieve and remember without the noise of major roadways, intense traffic, and businesses. Take a look at the allowable uses on page twenty-five, on properties abutting the cemetery. The ones I just, the three sections I just mentioned, WC eight, nine, and ten. Hotels, business center development, financial institutions, retail sales under and resale sales over seventy thousand, seventy-five thousand square feet. Professional offices, repair services, restaurants and fast food, and wholesale businesses up to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand square feet. And I didn't mention the enormous amounts of multi-story residences and the public civic cultural uses allowed in that area. The bustle of a city should not be encroaching upon that peaceful area. Fifty feet is the height limit of buildings in the PUD. I can't imagine towering buildings congesting that cemetery area, as is now allowed in those three subareas. Again, the highest point in Woodmont Commons. All other lands slope away from that section, but that point is the highest area in town, and I hope it will be respected as a final resting place. I ask that a much larger park-like buffer be positioned all around that area and designate it as a special subarea not to be built upon or developed. This is an opportunity for the developer to place a lot more open green space west of ninety-three, where the majority of residences will be, instead of where the majority of the green space is now, east of ninety-three, in mostly inaccessible wet areas. The area WC eight, nine, and ten, all three of them, around that new proposed cemetery subarea I just mentioned, should have graduated uses flowing outward from that point, from the cemetery. After all, one-day residents or even the developers of Woodmont Commons might find themselves also needing a quiet final resting space.
And they'll have a thousand spots to...
Well, if, if, if we keep our fingers crossed, hope so. I also ask that all perimeter Woodmont Commons structures, for example, for WC seven and other areas I mentioned, I believe WC nine and others, housing abutting existing residences should conform to the thirty-five-foot height limits associated with traditional AR-1 developments, in addition to matching their lot lines. Because I noticed in the, in the material that was provided, they're showing residences forty feet, I'm talking like single-family or, you know, standalone structures. So I think not only the lot line should match, but the, the height limits for that boundary area. Again, these are just my suggestions. Let's see. I ask that walking paths and trails in all areas of Woodmont Common, including shopping areas, both outside and inside stores, be handicap accessible. It's really important. I've read stories, well, actually read reports about developments that over time, things happen, and, for example, you have sidewalks and, and they're open for dining during the summer, and then planters are placed, and their problems present themselves. But I hope in the document, there's, there would be restrictions on, to benefit the handicapped or just people in general for a smooth flow of human traffic. I have a couple of thoughts here that I just thought of while we're discussing. What is the maximum amount of square foot, feet in, considered in an accessory apartment? Has that been determined, like how large these accessory apartments could be?
Seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet.
Okay, thank you. I, I, these are just odd things as I'm going through it. Now, there's a membership club in WC seven, that's the perimeter area. What would a membership club be doing there in a border area? I'm just curious. That was listed as one of the uses for WC seven.
Membership club, yes.
Well, I guess, one of the things we hope to do is to go through the subarea thinking and process in some detail so that we can put the responses to some of these in context.
Right, because we really haven't got into the...
That's...
Right, but that was listed as just a perimeter boundary area, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, I think it's a very reasonable question, and, and we'll try to explain what the thinking has been. We just haven't been able to get to the presentation part yet.
Yeah, that's our next...
Okay, no, that's fine. Let's see. Okay, I'm just curious, I remember dairy being part of the Woodmont Commons plan on the east side. Wasn't it originally a section, a triangular section on the east side of ninety-three? Just a small portion of dairy originally?
Some of the project-owned land extends over the boundary, but the PUD ordinance only exists in Londonderry, and so we're only looking to master plan the Londonderry acreage.
Also, I want to look at page seven of the plan. If you look at the part across the street from the storage facility now on Pillsbury Road, let me see if I meant seven or eight.
Make sure.
Okay, page, okay, it's either seven or eight, doesn't matter. It looks like there's some development going on across the street from that storage facility. I see in the original plan that was presented, some like ghost images of Woodmont Commons going through the residences that aren't part of the PUD. And I was wondering, what is that? Because on the latest drawing on page seven, there's, looks like there's a red line going between Pillsbury Road and the section of PUD just north of that, separated by three residential parcels.
I don't know if this is a good...
Don't know. If you look at the image behind the board, you'll see that that's all white, non-PUD land. I don't, I don't think we own those parcels.
Yeah, I, I don't know, that, that just looks like a kind of a graphic. There's nothing intended there. It's, whether that's on the baseline or is what that is, we'll check that, but there's no...
There's another one of those on the left of Trolley Car Lane. Before it jags over, I think it's a, well...
Maybe a leftover from, maybe a draft, just, just a drafting error in terms of a line that is not intended to be. We'll see that it gets removed, it's misleading or confusing.
Yes.
Yeah, that's interesting. I'm looking around, I don't see any others. Yeah. Yeah, the wrong color got turned on or something.
I don't think it has the detail that...
No, it's a different color, I don't know what it's doing.
Anything else, Anne?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Appreciate the time.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just for clarification, across the highway, according to the Londonderry GIS system, the, the distance from boundary to boundary at the, of the land is, excuse me, four-hundred-and-fifteen feet. So the distance between the boundary on the left side or the west side of the highway to the east side is four-hundred-and-fifteen feet.
So that's the whole expanse of...
Of ninety-three. So that would be the corridor, non, I would assume, non-owned land by development. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Mike Speltz, you're, and then the gentleman back there in the red shirt. Mike was just a little bit quicker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I can be pretty brief and to the point. I'm reluctant to go up against both our town planner and our town attorney, but I think I have to side with the concerns that Lynn and Chris have expressed here about including the eastern side of I-93. And thank you, John, for pointing out the, the distance involved. If you look at the ordinance, it says where portions are separated by a road, road right-of-way, utility right-of-way, or other like element. I think Anne made the argument, and I would concur, that there, we have no roads other than I-93 that are four-hundred-and-fifty, and I suspect that that's the existing right-of-way, which may expand when the eight lanes of I-93 are complete and the exit lanes going to exit four-A. So I don't know that, that I-93 fits this definition. Now, let's say for the sake of argument that it, that it does. The claim to contiguity rests entirely on two small one-acre tax lots, there's ten dash twenty-nine, C, two-A, and two-B, that are, that I think, if I'm looking at the plan rate, sort of extend east of Trolley Car Lane, northeast to the I-93 right-of-way. The total frontage on those two acres might be, what, three-hundred feet or so? So that, that is where the claim of contiguity rests, on that small little strip of land. There is no contiguity only at a point, which isn't, which doesn't meet the definition of contiguity at Ash Street and Pillsbury. So there's two reasons why I think that this can't be a, a single PUD. In addition, you know, we've, we've talked about the, the uses that were proposed, and it's a totally different character than is being proposed for the west side. We have a lot of detail on the west side and hardly any, any on the east side. It's, it's just one subarea. So, you know, how, how can that be considered to meet the definition in this ordinance of a comprehensive detailed plan? It's a huge uncertainty for the board. As Chris pointed out, you could have eight-hundred residential units on the east side, or you could have none. Because of that, you could have fourteen-hundred-and-thirty residential units on the west side, or you might only have six-hundred. How could you meet your obligation as a board to think about what the future of this land is going to be when you have, subject to those huge swings? So I think a step toward resolving that problem would be to split this into two different planned unit developments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. And gentleman back there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Just because that is a big swing, I remember we had a conversation before about this, that the swing wasn't, that because of the restrictions on either side, the possible swing is actually much smaller than that, and it's something that we touched on earlier tonight, but I would appreciate an answer at some point, maybe tonight, if you have the information, just because I think that that eight-hundred number swing is a huge one for the public to consider tonight. And I don't think it's accurate, but I'd like to just double-check on that, because I think we've talked about this before, that with the restrictions on either side, the swing is actually much less. Is that, I just ask if it's possible to...
Yeah.
Get that number verified?
But again, what I'd like to do, that, what we'd hope to do is to, we're trying to do a sort of sequential discussion, looking at the overall piece, and then there's a whole system of thinking about how it breaks down. And I'd, I'd rather discuss that so we have the information in front of us, and then show how it links to transportation and other impact evaluations in terms of flexibility. But the idea, the fundamental idea is you can move things between some of the pieces, but there's a limit to how much you can move, and that under no circumstances should any of the components get overloaded, and under all circumstances, site plan review will make sure that the impacts and the, the conditions are set so that everything is, is properly balanced. That's, there's a whole system that we're using to try to establish that, which includes the notion of not just overall maximum development, but maximum within a series of subareas, and the uses aren't all permitted in all of the different areas either. So it's not just one big pot, it's a, it's, it's, it's broken down into pieces, and it's reasonably complicated, but it's on purpose to make sure that there really is a fine-grained, well-scaled development in the future.
I have to chime in, that, that is fairly accurate. You know, there, there is a large swing back and forth between the west side and the east side, including all the residential units. You can have, it's true, you can have up to eight-hundred units under the subarea maximas on the east side, you can have all of the residential units on the west side, and you can also have the vast majority of the new business development and other uses. I think that, that, that needs to be clear, because I think it's, that's one of the key issues for the planning board going forward, is how much flexibility are you comfortable with? How much density on either side, and from side to side, without clearly defining it, are you comfortable with? So that's, that's a fair statement. There is a huge swing from one side to the other, and actually, there's a fairly good swing between the south side of Pillsbury Road and the north side of Pillsbury Road. So just keep that in mind, and I would look at that very carefully in terms of that table, that, that matrix for subarea maximums, and compare that to the, the, the concept plan and the, and the, and the subarea definitions.
I appreciate you chiming in. I remembered having a pretty detailed discussion about this quite a long time ago, and I'm sorry, I don't have any of the, I don't remember the specifics of what we discussed, but my memory was it was not, it was much smaller swing than, than we first thought, that when you looked at the maxima, it couldn't swing that much. Maybe that's changed since we had that discussion, but, but thank you, and it will be interesting to hear more about it.
Yeah, well, well, we want to get into that, and, because it is, it's very important, this ten points out.
We would suggest that that's more important than the, this question that persists of how many PUDs or how many areas, because, number one, separating this into multiple PUDs means going through this exercise on multiple occasions, and that's assuming that you have satisfied the presumption that's in the ordinance, and that you've done so consistent with the legal advice you've received. There's also the notion that you want these areas to tie together so that they have a harmony of uses and themes, and can be built out under a common plan. You don't want the possibility for two different plans adjusting for two different development areas and ending up with two halves of something that look different from one another. And so it's been our suggestion throughout that the better focus area than how many PUDs do we have is, what are the limitations upon how development density can shift from one place to another, so that you don't have this question that's been raised of overburdening a particular area. Is the, is the density going to be fairly allocated in one place versus another? Are we studying in a proper manner how those shifts will occur? That, that, at least to my lay-thinking, is, is the better question than, should we have this discussion on multiple occasions for multiple PUDs, to try to then manage multiple PUDs?
Okay, the floor.
Thank you. Joe. Joe Marzio, Court on Street, I just have a couple of quick questions. I was looking at the map, not that one in particular, but Gilcrest Road, am I to believe that there are going to be cuts from this development onto Gilcrest Road?
Again, I, we will, we will talk about that, we were showing in the, in a diagram that's later in the presentation, that there will be some potential connections to Gilcrest presentation, that there will be some potential connections to Gilcrest Road that have been illustrated, and under, for what we've talked about, is seeing the finer-grained secondary streets in some locations.
Okay, because I know through some of the conceptual discussions we had, as my understanding, we're going to have three rows of apple trees along Gilcrest.
Right.
And then there'd be the single-family housing that would abut, the traffic would go onto a road that would be on the, be the east of that.
Right. They're going to be design standards in terms of what could occur, limitations in terms of the character of any intersections that occur, and that has to be linked into the site planning and design for that area, and the uses that would occur. All of those would have to come together in order to do that. But what we're saying in terms of the diagram, and the planning that we're, we'll be bringing forward at the transportation session, is that the significant primary distribution system does not connect to Gilcrest. In the location.
Am I to take that, that there are no cuts coming onto Gilcrest?
According to this one, on page seven, there's two.
Yes, I see that, that's what I'm asking.
Yes, and that's what we're saying.
Because whoever thinks about that has never been down Gilcrest Road. That's the first thing. The second thing, please let me finish. I waited for everybody else, now I want to.
Yep.
We had an incident a couple of weeks ago of a tree, I believe, was down on Gilcrest. Now, some genius decided to shut off Devonshire, so you can't get on 102. That's all right in the summer, because you can drive over somebody's lawn to get in and out, but this particular incident, nobody could get down there. So all the traffic that was trying to go on 102 went down through that small development, made I don't know how many laps. I don't even know if they ever opened that gate.
They did open it, because I got stuck there.
Eventually, probably. But the point is, now that there's snow there, you can't even drive over somebody's lawn. So you can't get around that barrier.
They have to open the gate.
How it's possible for anybody to get in and out of Cortland Street, which is the only way out of that development now, with cuts coming off that orchard onto Gilcrest, somebody needs, this design team needs to go there and take a look at things. And I've got one more thing. The existing pond that was used, you know, used to spray the trees, is that part of the pond, and where, is it going to still drain down to Century Village?
Again, we'll be addressing that in the session on the open space, and how the open space and the pond relate to the other development. That'll be coming up.
Okay.
Open space is probably, because next month will be, the next meeting will be traffic, transportation, everything, and I think, well, in the next several months we'll be, we're covering that.
Okay, but those are two of my main concerns, but the Gilcrest thing's got me just baffled. I just can't even imagine it.
That's what we're going to take a real good look at.
Yep.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Yes. Just name and address, please.
Marcela Smith-Hogan, 93 Gilcrest. The hospital that they want to build, I just wondered, I did some research on the EPA website, and it says that there's guidelines about the density of the people around the hospital, and breathing, the breathing issues of the toxic emissions from the blood and things that they burn, the body parts and things that they burn in hospitals all day long, and I'm just wondering, have they, has that, has it been approved by the EPA, the hospital? Has that all been?
There's no.
Gone through, has there been any review of, you know, the breathing issues for the people that are going to be living around this hospital? And working and.
The, there's no specific proposal for a hospital, there's a zoning concept that it might be permitted if it met a number of conditions. And any hospital would have to comply with all state, local, state, and federal regulations that are applicable to it, so, but I think this.
Has there been any presentation made to the EPA to get any kind of approval or?
There's not a specific project being proposed, the question is whether one might be applied for. That's really the question that we're dealing with. Could somebody apply for one, would it be a benefit, and what are the conditions? And one of those would be certainly complying with all state, federal, and local regulations. So, but we'll take a look to make sure that we understand if this notion of proximity standards, we'll take a look at that, that's a very good point.
Because it's very dangerous, you know, and there's, you know, there's a lot of people in that you're going to be putting, adding to that area, then there already is a lot of people there, you know? And as myself, I'm a cancer patient, and I'm already really well-served by all the doctors and medical offices that are in the area that I'm in. I'm already very well-served by that, and I really don't feel like we need another hospital, you know, where we're completely surrounded by an emergency center, and medical centers, and cancer centers, and two or three different hospitals. I mean, I think we've got enough, we really do, but.
Okay, oh, good.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? We'll continue with, we believe, what, page 25?
Yeah, about there. Well, we've been able to plunge into aspects of this, and of course, you've had the benefit of having the document, so I'm kind of going over information that you had a chance to take a look at. But I think in the setting of trying to explain this and the presentation we have in front of us, the basic idea in the diagram that is behind you on page 21, as I'd mentioned, reflects this notion that not everything fits in all places, and that there ought to be certainly, for example, a retail connector, where there's retail today, that the edges and housing and lower density happening at the outskirts of, and edges, makes sense, that where you have internally, where they're going to be connector roads and intersections, that those are places, just like in traditional village development, the villages happened at the crossroads, the places people can get easily to. And I think one of the considerations too, which isn't so apparent at this level, is this is intended to be a walkable series of neighborhoods and communities, and that means that having a mixture of uses that are close enough to each other that you can easily walk to and from, the different components and having a network to do it, will inform that. So what happened is that then, in thinking about that, the notion was to take the kinds of uses that have been discussed and could be imagined, but have a series of subareas. And those subareas, we've called to make it WC, that means Woodmont Common, that seemed to be the easiest way to remember this, and that we've numbered them from 1 to 12, and one that's, where some of the existing buildings and retail are, WC-1GL. And what we've listed, which is one of the important requirements of your zoning, is to let you know what the subareas, what the scale of them might be, in terms of just the acreage that's involved, to get a sense of how this all adds up. Then what happens is that the table of uses, that one could have imagined being allowable or applicable, are created, are listed in this matrix of allowable uses, and we've split the matrix into two parts on the screen. And I should point out that this is, there's a lot of tracking between the reorganized use table, the categories, and the major pieces. There's a change, for example, that Ted spotted, where we have home occupation in the briefing document, where we had, a home occupation was supposedly permitted in an area down at WCGL1, where you were not allowed to have residences, so it was tough to have a home occupation where you can't have a home. So there are a couple of things that we, I'll be very careful to make sure that this all aligns properly, and I think we've got it, but we'll be doing some double-checking with everybody about this. But the basic idea is this, you go through some of the areas, some of the mixes make sense, and, but others they don't, others don't, and if you look at the most flexible area, back to your point, the scenarios that one can imagine where many, many of these uses could fit in WC-12, which is the larger area in the northeastern portion, one can imagine conditions under which a lot could occur, but as you get into the tighter, smaller areas, it gets, it gets much more restrictive. So then, what happens is that there's a system of subarea maximums, maximum developments that occur, and that's the expanded table, and I think that the next slide shows this. I think, so we've talked about the subareas and what the purposes of them are, and then the next slide should show, and it's very hard to read perhaps at this scale, but you get the idea of a complex table that breaks down each of these subareas, and on the top, and then on the left-hand side, all of those categories of major uses. So in some cases, you could have, for example, the maximum residential, that you could have, if you add up all these individual maximums, would seem to be greater than the 1,430 units, but you're not allowed to do more than 1,430 units. And it's true that you could have just 800 residential units as a maximum over WC-12, but, but you could achieve the residential development without having residential development over there, and it would be more perhaps commercial or retail, office kind of a use. But if it's on the west side, it still is compartmentalized in a number of different subareas. It's almost like, I could be an ice tray. You know, you have an ice tray, and you've got these different spots, and you can move some of the things between them, but you can't put all 1,430 units in one spot, it has to be distributed. So the trick is to take a look at each one of these areas and understand, if that were to be developed to the maximum, could a very good solution occur? But you can't add up all of the different subareas and end up with this out of scale or, importantly, imbalanced development, which is such an important part of what the east side, west side, north side is. It's trying to keep all of this balanced. Now, I think that as we looked at this, one of the things about the hospital, another pickup was that it showed in your briefing document that hospital could occur, could be applied for in WC-6 and WC-8, and that was just an error, that was a transcription error, that wasn't in the original application. And so the document up in front of you doesn't have that. So we picked up a couple of things already. Another thing to point out is that the idea was that in a couple of the residential areas, WC-3 and WC-9, there was an intent to allow for some small business uses, the corner store kind of a place. So we put 5,000 square feet as kind of a placeholder for that concept, but we hadn't put a limit on it before. So we thought, well, let's put a placeholder limit on it to indicate what the idea of it is, just as a way of trying to be consistent all the way across.
I got a question.
Yes, uh-huh.
On page 27, where you have at the top, where you have WC-1GL, and WC-1, and WC-2, could you just put the acreage that corresponds to that? That way, when somebody's looking down and they see 320 units are possible there, and I understand all about the maxima, don't think I'm worried about that at all.
Understood.
You just want it shown on that table for information.
Yeah, just so that we have everything in one spot.
You'll have to keep going back and forth.
So you don't have to keep going back and forth.
That's making me nervous.
Yeah, no, I think that's very good, and it raises an important question about, that we'll be working with you on, which is what's the density that you could have? Because you can say, there are two ways in which density are used in planning terms. Usually, density is the number of units or square footage that can happen on a lot, not in a whole area with streets and roads and open space, et cetera. So with this particular PUD approach, the density is a combination of the total area, and then the site planning standards of just how much you can get within one of the areas. It's a term definition. Density is one of those funny things, is it four units per acre? Well, it's a lot, or is it total area? But that'll help you get an understanding.
It'll help us, thank you.
That's a very good point. So that's really where we are, and then, just to wrap up quickly, the next few slides, just, we wanted to give you a sense that when we're taking a look at the transportation network, and we'll be doing presentations, the basic transportation network has some primary connectors to make sure that all the pieces do get connected together internally, and that they connect to the external connectors properly, so that these uses can be reached, and that there will be a finer-grained set of streets and roads, and they will have to emerge that are within the area. And that the next slide, just as a word slide, but it just mentions that the open space, we're working on a series of rules to make sure that there is good accessible open space of multiple types, and the principle we're working on, within walking distance of any place. And that makes it a little bit different from just saying, well, let's make sure that we have 60 acres of open space. Well, if it's not balanced and connected, the notion of having wildlife corridors for open, is part of what open space is, it's not just having a bunch of landscaping. As a landscape architect, I can speak to that. And creating that, so it emerges over time in a regular way, is part of land use thinking, and so we'll be presenting that. And finally, the last few slides, talk about the fact that with this kind of an approach, having a kind of a menu of good practices to make sure that the sidewalks are walkable, that the setbacks make sense, that the building scales, they're low where they should be low, they're taller where they make sense to be taller, to the point of how the place builds to be accessible, and if you flip through these, Rick, these are drawn from other projects. This happens to be a zoning and design guideline, pattern book, that Rick and I, and others have been working on for Claremont, that begin to take the ideas of what do setbacks mean, where to parking, where do buildings go, how do you add these all together, to make sure that as applications come in, you can see and communicate that every piece of the puzzle will add up, that it's not just a land use, and then find that there's a disorganized, unattractive, unconnected set of places. So those are previews of the topics that we'll get into in more detail, and that are very helpful to understand what these land use ideas are leading towards. So that's really our full presentation and discussion. Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll do the staff, any input right now?
Not right now, thank you.
Okay. And I'll go through the board again, and we'll go to the public again. So, Chris, you got the?
Thank you. I get pointed again.
Good, yeah. Good person to start with. Heavy hitters.
All right, so, on page 22, and this was, glad we got to this bit finally, because this is where the rubber hits the road, if you will. So in the subareas, one of the things that was coming to light, I had notes from when I reviewed the document about the definitions of the boundaries of those subareas, and I see you have a statement in there, on page 22, about the initial boundaries of each subarea will be identified, but the boundaries will be subject to minor variation as a part of the review and approval process, sort of defined in 11.3 area regulations. So what's your intent there? What were you envisioning?
What we're thinking of, maybe we say that that line is there plus or minus a certain number of feet. It's sort of interesting, because we're developing a kind of a zoning idea, but it would be kind of crazy if it turns out that a parking lot needs to extend a little bit more. And I don't know if you all have run across in your various proposals, but when you start to run into projects that have zoning lines that go right through them, the parcel land, it gets to be complicated. So the idea is that you can wiggle it a little bit to make sure that you capture complete projects. We're thinking that that's a good way of doing it, and then we define a particular number, so, but the lines would be meets and bounds, and say, this line runs from this point to this point, but you can modify it without having to do a whole zone change to capture the parking lot that's associated with a house a little bit.
So you're looking to put some language in there that would say, let's say, a percentage factor that that could change by?
Yeah, or maybe feet, maybe it's 150 feet, or 50 feet, or 200 feet. We've got to pick a number that is meaningful, just so that you don't start running the lines right across where a building might make sense, and then you say, well, wait a second, is this a residential, or is it a commercial, and how does it do it? It gets a little.
Yeah, that's my concern, is that you've got that boundary that's set, but then, you know, we get, a request that comes in, and they want to move the boundary, and the boundary takes it into an area where, you know, we would have said that doesn't need to change.
That's right, and you see, you want to have the ability.
Hard time defense for that.
Exactly, and you want to have an ability, I think, within the zoning approval process to say, oh, no, that's fine, that's a minor thing, without having to do a whole new PUD master plan or PUD master plan amendment, because the way the parcels line up, there's a little bit of movement, but not much. It doesn't mean, it's just trying to be practical. That's what our idea is. So we'll come up with a specific notion.
And then that'll be a critical piece to see how that's written up, and how it's worded, and what we feel about that.
Yeah.
I did some remedial math here, looking at the, you know, approximate acreage that you have for the areas, the suburbs. you have for the areas, the subareas, and then, you know, cross referencing that into the quantities, the maximas for residentials in each one of them, where there is residential proposed. To Mike Spelt's comment earlier, those add up to way beyond the fourteen hundred and thirty. Maxima for the overall PUD effect is like seventeen hundred. They could all land on the eastern side of, so we could go to the fourteen hundred and thirty on the eastern side without touching the west, sorry, the western side without touching the eastern side.
Yeah, you could do, that's right.
And that has me concerned, I will have to say, as a board member, that got me very concerned. There's a couple of areas in here that, you know, I'll make the statement, WC's five, six, seven, nine, ten, eleven, not what Anna Chiappa was regarding, but more that those areas are directly abutting existing residential properties. And for example, WC seven, if we took the maxima that you have for there, the acreage is, by your record, twenty-three, you're looking to put a maxima of forty-eight. If we're looking to do like to like in that subarea, that should only be twenty-three. Otherwise, you're doing half acre lots against acre property, properties abutting it. So those areas where we're directly in contact, I think we have to set the maximus to say it matches what's surrounding it.
But not to be contrary, but that might be where the accessory units would be, and you would, that would be counted as two.
Possibly.
And just land.
But I think then...
There's still be an acre and it could have two units.
Then that's got to be more clearly defined in here.
Yeah, that's the little bit of complexity that you start to realize is there, and you can't just look at the numbers and divide them, and you start to say, wait a second, we've got to actually think about all of this together. So these are very good points.
But I think we've got to have that very clearly defined, because I know if I lived there, I'd be sitting there going, wow.
Yeah.
And the same for the WC nine, and, well, the other zones, areas that we identified, the five, six, seven, nine, ten, and eleven, all areas where it's off Gilcrest, it's the area up against Harvey, in two areas. And certainly WC ten, I'd prefer to see that, you know, that the, if there's multifamily structures are going to be in that area, that they be on the downhill side of things, looking over the highway, rather than, to Anna's point, being in the promontory of the highest point in Londonderry, being very, very visible. So looking at the densities, one of the other things I'd like to see, and I'd like to have you guys show to us, is what it's going to look like, is for WC one, the density there is ten units per acre, if you take the numbers. So what would that look like if that became a reality? If that, you know, you ended up deciding to put in that number of units in WC one, what would a building with that kind of density look like?
I think that idea of real life examples would be really...
Helpful for us to understand what it would look like, and also for the public to say, you know, well, yay or nay. And then on the uses, I have to say that that whole area north of Pillsbury, I'd much rather see, and I personally, I've got a problem with things other than residential, you know, with multifamily grading residentials, you know, as you said, going towards the center of the stone in the olive, that you've got more less dense residential, more dense residential towards the center where, you know, it's not developed right now. But the other pieces in here, I've got some, you know, concerns about putting any kind of commercial up in that area. I think we need to keep that down south of Pillsbury. That's where it belongs, to my mind, and you get above north of Pillsbury, it really needs to be residential with maybe some small, very light business stuff. And so the use table there, I've got some, a lot of highlighted marks for those, for the five, six, seven, nine, ten, eleven areas. So, you know, I think you, a couple were raised, but for example, the membership club one that was raised, financial institutions, any one of those ones down in the business use areas, for those areas, I'm not comfortable with. Anything in the accommodation institutional civic uses, residential, I think belong up in there, but the business uses, to my mind, they need to be on the south side of the, of Pillsbury. And I'll shut up.
Rick?
Tom?
I'm all set. John?
To echo some of Chris's concerns, I too am concerned a bit about the border properties and the densities. You know, I did the quick path on it as well. It looks like the border densities are roughly about a half acre around it, and then, you know, if you look at any of those border properties, they are an acre lot. And, you know, I know the argument can be if they're, you know, mother-in-law apartments or whatever, my question would be, is that permissible today in the existing lots? And my feeling is if they're not, then we shouldn't allow it there. If they are, then we should, very simply. And like Chris, I had some concerns about the Pillsbury Road crossing of WC one, not only from, you know, having, you know, that crossed the road, but what impact that's going to have on the road. I know we had a lengthy discussion in the past relative to the road, and I think originally the drawings had some type of circle or something, or square in there, and we had lengthy discussion with that, and I too would like to see that state to the south of Pillsbury Road. WC eight, the challenge that I have with WC eight at this particular point is again the commercial up in that area, and if I look at the maps, the satellite maps and so forth, it's difficult to imagine that we're going to put any type of commercial up there. And the infrastructure to support that, you know, regardless if we're going to get to four A at some point in time in, you know, our lives, it just doesn't seem to fit in that particular space. And I too would not support, you know, having commercial of what's been defined here in WC eight. That's it for me.
Mary?
I'm good.
Lynn?
I'll just echo John and Chris's comments as well on the commercial development north of Pillsbury Road. I concur with that. I think that area should just be maintained as a residential area only. I think that's the character of the area up there, and that's what I would support. Going back to the maximas though, a little bit too, in talking a little bit on the east side of ninety-three, I don't know, we have maximas established for all of these areas. Is there any way, or would minimas be possible in some situations? I mean, so like on the east side of ninety-three, we'll commit to two hundred and fifty housing units on the east side. I don't know. I'm just throwing out something, because we have that big swing, and I'm just trying, how can we minimize or mitigate that big swing?
I mean, I think it's an interesting question. I don't know practically how that would work, since this ultimately will function as a zoning map, and folks who look to present projects consistent with the master plan would come in with a site plan and a subdivision, so how you could commit to a minimum of any kind would be really a cumbersome concept, something we can think about.
The idea I'm trying to really address is how do we mitigate the issue of having these big swings if something doesn't happen, and we decide to move that density or the maxima from the east side over to the west side?
That's the theme I'm picking up on. It's what we anticipated, it's what your review team has also been focused on, so I think the question is just trying to, or the answer rather, is trying to dial in on a balance that everyone can view as within reason. So if it's okay, let's, let me just say, we've noted the comment and we'll get back.
That's fine.
Yeah, I'm all set.
My only concern is that the new idea of an auxiliary apartment being a residential unit, I think, sort of confuses the issue, and I wish we could designate those a different way. I think that the way that people are living now, it's going to be more and more desirable to be able to have an in-law apartment in your house, and I kind of don't want to see that restricted with some arbitrary number, or restricted to a certain spot necessarily. And I think it confuses the issue when you're trying to decide whether it's two units on one piece of property, or whether it's really just somebody's house with grandma living above the garage, you know? I think it really confuses the issue. I wish we could find another way to designate those, so that we could get back to the thirteen hundred units and call that something else. I think that's an unnecessary complication.
Okay, I mean, that's a response we had to a review comment, and so I guess my reaction would be, we probably could live with it either way, and it's something we should discuss further.
Sorry. If I'm contradicting something we discussed earlier, maybe I wasn't here for that meeting, but just the way this conversation's gone, it sort of does seem to complicate the issue.
I think it was more just a general desire to understand the limits of what's allowed and to not forget accessory units as a category and potentially having an impact on externalities. And so it was our response to that comment to try and put some number on that, so that we weren't being accused, frankly, of trying to exploit that category, which is not our intention.
And I guess my concern with not having a limit on it would be that if it was used in the other direction, if it was used as my son coming home with his baby, that means that I would be bringing, you know, another family into the area and potentially having a school impact as opposed to an elderly person, you know what I mean?
Well, but I guess we already, we deal with that, I think, right now a different way, and it seems like a shift to deal with it as though it's two residential units. I, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't think that's how we're dealing with it right now.
No, we're calling them two units.
We're calling it two units.
We're calling them accessory apartments, not in-laws, and the owner has to live on one or either one of the sides. You know, we do have restrictions on it size-wise, when it can be built. I think it's, you can't just build your house with an accessory apartment in it, you have to wait a year, two years. I'm not sure exactly what that is, you'd have to talk to the building department, but...
And septic systems obviously make a difference, because you usually have your house maxing out your septic...
Extra bedrooms, but right now, we do call them two living units.
It just, it doesn't seem to make sense to me that if someone builds a colonial house on a lot abutting an existing property, and then there's an accommodation for a mother-in-law there, that's really, I just don't think that's a two-family house.
It's not a two-family.
Right. I know that that's a different designation, but what I mean is that, for planning purposes, when you're talking about, okay, the people who live on Gilcrest, for example, if the house that backs up to them is really a one-family colonial, but it has some space for an in-law in it, I just, it's sort of different than saying it's a two-family house.
Two-family house, right now, requires an acre and a half of land, whereas a single family is one acre, and you can have an accessory apartment, seven hundred and fifty square feet or less.
Okay. Then, okay, maybe my second question...
Then that's what it is now? That's what it is right now?
Yes.
About that, it's just that at some point, when we were talking like with, like, we were talking about those areas that abut the existing homes, having similar sized lots, and I noticed that you didn't answer when someone said the density looks like it could be much higher, and those would be half acre lots. And right now, are we not at the point where the acreage of those lots has been discussed? Because I was kind of thinking it was one acre, but then I was looking through this again pretty carefully, and I wasn't seeing that.
Yeah, I think that the whole idea of this PUD master planning process is to provide an opportunity to create traditional neighborhoods that are different from the standard, I use the term cookie cutter or pattern, where there's one acre, one acre, one acre, one lot, in that you can shift the houses and the housing so it best fits the site, to the point of where does it fit, what the character is, and you may have some lots that are a little smaller and some lots that are bigger, to get the character that you're trying to create, which is more walkable, and that the density, and I think that what you're meaning to hit on is the same thing we've been puzzling through, is we'd like to have flexibility in terms of housing types, the mother-in-law apartment kind of thing or accessory apartment, but there's a point where it starts to get out of control. What I'm hearing is it's desirable, something we want to have some flexibility, but we just don't want it to become a big problem, and we've got to define this, because there will be real life proposals coming forward in the future, and it's going to help us all if we can figure it out. So these are, I think, really good questions.
Maybe another way to answer that is, you were questioning, when do we get into the various densities that are being proposed? My comment would be that the PUD ordinance language contemplates higher densities than you might find in the underlying, in the underlying districts that exist in today's ordinances. And so I would suggest that that should not be the governing factor in whether or not a PUD is conforming or approvable. It should instead be the types of focused discussions that we're going to be having about traffic or fiscal impact or open space. And is it being proposed in a way that it can be sustained, the impacts can be mitigated, and it can function as a unit without creating a tilt of the machine or an overload?
I would agree for most parts, but in those abutting areas, that's been, you know, has been important to the abutters and to the people on this board all along, was that that area...
Yeah.
Keep the character that exists there.
I think the impression you have given us...
That's exactly where we're headed in terms of the planning, that those edges and matching up, which is a very important concept in traditional neighborhood, in traditional communities, that one side of the street kind of looks like the other side of the street, and feels like neighbors are neighbors. So I think that that's our intention, and we're just trying to figure out the best way to capture that.
I just wanted you to reiterate that, because that has been our impression, that you were going to match across the street from, you know, one acre to one acre.
That's right. And that's really the intent.
Whatever happens with the rest of the density, we deal with that, but as far as across the street, it matches.
That's right. That's what the diagrams and the drawings and the ideas have been all along.
It's the whole periphery, it matches what it butts on.
That's right. It feels like it's part of the community, and streets are the way that we tend to move along and understand and get the feel for what a place is like. So that's clearly the intention.
Got me?
Nothing.
Lisa?
Couple observations.
Maybe more.
To echo some comments that were made, but to further refine, when several board members had talked about their comfort level or not, if you will, of having commercial properties north of Pillsbury Road, I see what you're doing as I look at WC nine, WC ten. I can see by seeing here that there's a fast food restaurant potentially, a restaurant up in there, and other commercial type uses, I can see where you might want to envision that if an exit four A comes to fruition and you have the, you know, offload off the highway. But where those parcels, I mean, I would just echo their comments, that I don't think it's appropriate there. If it were closer on the other side of Trolley Car Lane abutting ninety-three, I think it would be more appropriate. So I see what you're doing, but based on where it's positioned, west of Trolley Car, I just, I don't, I, like the others, don't, wouldn't feel comfortable allowing that, those uses there. Particularly in WC seven, it's, I think, one of public comments was made too, that, you know, it's such a narrow perimeter going around there, I can envision the membership club, and maybe that was just an oversight, some mistake, yeah.
Yeah, it could be.
So, you know, a few things like that. Wholesale business in WC nine didn't really make sense to me either, but again, that fits into commercials. So again, I'm just sort of echoing further previous comments. If you go back to that page twenty-five, I was looking also at what is not permitted. And I was curious to see, you know, I see WC one GL and WC twelve, what's not permitted is agriculture. So I understand that in WC one GL, because that's where you're looking for high density. I get that, to a point. Aren't these areas real, and I'm no environmentalist, but haven't we been told in the past that these particular areas, and even WC twelve, are rich in soils there? And would that ever be a consideration? I mean, you've noted that agriculture would not be permitted there at all.
We'll have to take a look at it again. I think it's a good question. I think that what was happening perhaps, in many, in some of these areas, we've gone through various illustrations and studies and discussions, and then you try to put it in a chart, and you've got to go back exactly as you're doing and saying, well, are there good scenarios? We talk about flexibility in WC twelve, well, it really is a place where there could be a lot of flexibility, and why is that there? We'll go back and revisit that and try to see how we can think about that.
And where would a golf course fit into this? And where would, where would a golf course fit into this? Would that be under recreation, private?
I can think that, having done planning for golf courses, of the amount of square, the land area that you need for golf courses is absolutely enormous. So...
We could have a PUD, we could have a golf course.
Yeah, it's kind of like that.
We're going to have a PUD.
It's really, they're really big.
Thanks.
Okay, so I'll move on off of that.
Yeah.
My other last comment is, and I realize you will probably bring it up when we get into transportation, however, you opened the door for it on page 29, where you kind of envisioned your primary street network and your connection zones with primary and secondary streets. And I seem to recall, I was having a conversation with you about hopefully eliminating that jog that Pillsbury takes, whereby it goes west to Gilchrist and then up and then, and then west again, to alleviate some of those traffic concerns. And again, this is something that you're going to talk further down the line in the transportation conversation, that's fine, but it just, it just seems to me, whereas if you're implying that those two roads are secondary roads to your primary one that you're going to run through there, you're, I wouldn't consider those secondary roads, I would consider those pretty primary at that point.
We can take another look at, at that, but my, my recollection is that it's really complicated by not controlling the, that box of white that's in there.
Piece of property.
And not knowing whether or not that owner would want a road through their property. I suspect not.
Not enough land to just go up over the hill?
Up and over's tough.
But I think the idea, with this diagram...
Then you just take out all that road, and there's your beautiful bed and breakfast that overlooks the pond.
Yeah, those are significant.
And you have a nice open space next to Mike's house. No more roads.
I think the idea is that in terms of planning a circulation network, there's a certain amount that can be done within the land that, that the applicant controls and where it could connect, but there are going to need to be transportation improvements on the streets that aren't owned by, and that they have to be done collaboratively with the town. And I think this particular instance is, and it's on somebody else's property, it's neither the town's nor folks, we could speculate, but we're trying to do what we can control. And then through the transportation improvement program, the notion of mitigations and agreements with the town, to make sure that the outside network and the inside network all add up. And then we'll be talking about that. So you'll see the diagrams next month, we'll start to show how all these pieces need to tie together and what the transportation relationships between all these parts get to be.
Okay. Great, I'll look forward to that, thanks.
Yeah.
Almost said.
Marie?
Okay. That's okay. That's all right. I actually also echo some of the things that have already been said. I am concerned about the swing with the residential numbers to, to the different areas. I would hope that we can fine-tune that. It's just so open-ended, you know, especially being, we talked about before, that different projects and developments can come up for the different areas at one time. How does it all come together to look right if you have something that's, you know, if you're going to have WC one starting to be built out, and then all of a sudden something in WC eight happening, and something in WC 10 happening? If we don't really know what's going to be in those areas, how, how is it, how do you have the vision of how it's going to look if, if something can be developed here, something can be developed here, and you're not building out one phase at a time? That's what I can't wrap around.
Yeah, I think that's where...
Having a tough time with that.
The, the last pages are, there needs to be a system of design standards so that even though you're not building it at once, you know that it will fit together, and it's like one of the...
Like a puzzle.
It's like a puzzle. It's exactly like a puzzle. And maybe it's a kind of interesting puzzle, because the pieces might be able to go together three or four different ways, but it's not an infinite number of ways.
Right.
There aren't infinite number of pieces.
Right.
So you need to be able to mix and match a bit.
Yeah.
And that's where the, so much has been learned over the last couple decades about how to get the coherence, it just seemed to be used to happen by, you know, naturally.
Yeah.
We actually have to make decisions about it today.
Yeah, and, and like, like other people were saying on, on, on the board, that I also don't see a lot of commercial in, in that, what is it, WC eight, WC 10? I also, north of Pillsbury, I, I see more residential in there. That's what I thought it was going to be, until I started reading and see more of the details. I mean, I could see a country store, like a Nutfield, you know? Something like that, you know?
Can you see a bank?
Of course, a Dunkin' Donuts, you know? Got to have a Dunkin' Donuts. But you know what I'm saying? Like, I could see like, because when I, when I read that...
Those kinds of things, I think would be very nice up there.
Yeah.
What's that? Mary, what did you say would be nice?
A bank would be very nice up there, for somebody not to have to travel down Gilchrist.
Yeah, when I saw that, that it would be some services, I went, oh, that's not a bad idea. I'm thinking like a country, like I said, like a small little store.
Just to use that as an, as a, as a way to explain further, we have an amazing complement of experts on our team, but that's exactly the kind of discussions that we have.
Okay.
And when you look at this chart and you start to think, well, I could envision something like an X going there, you're limited to putting forward a use category. You can't say, I only want that business, or I only want that owner.
No, I get that. But then again, you don't want to say, but you can put commercial up there, and then leave it that blanket at that big, too.
I think this is a really good puzzle to work on, because a neighborhood, if you look at the walking distances, and having a scale on these is pretty good, and people will walk up to 2,500 feet and turn around and come back, and it's not too bad, that's about the limit of it, and 1,200 is even better. It's at that range, that quarter mile to half a mile. And the thought is, gee, if we can have neighborhoods where you can walk down to the corner store or the country store, somebody has a small professional office that's theirs, yes, some people are coming in, that's on almost a hamlet or sub-neighborhood level, that could be real amenity for people, and it could be okay.
Oh, absolutely.
But, but, but you have to know what that really is doing for you, and to set up the rules for it.
I know, I get that.
And I think that's been more what we have in mind. But then you put it in the chart, and the worst case immediately comes forward. So we're struggling with the same thing.
Right. But that's what I see. If there's going to be any commercial in that area, I see it as something like that, something light, and something convenient, you know, something that people would want, but not, you know, not...
That they're living on Hovey Road, would love to walk down or take their bicycle down to get to and from today if it was there, but it's not a jump ship.
I don't, I don't think people would want strip malls up in their neighborhood.
Right.
You know, I don't think that's appropriate.
I don't think they envision strip malls.
But I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just, the first thing that came to my mind, I'm just saying, you know, light commercial, I don't know how you word it, but I couldn't see a lot of commercial there either.
It's been really interesting, and this is a complete aside, but it has been really interesting working in Claremont, because they have really mixed neighborhoods. They have corner stores that have found their way and little shops, and we said, well, don't you want to kind of separate things? And they said, no, 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 we just want to make sure that the parking works and they look good. We like having things with an easy walking distance. And it turned out to be really hard from a zoning standpoint to figure out how to make that happen.
Yeah. And make it look good.
But they love it. And so that's a little bit what we're trying to puzzle through. But we're going to do, have to do some work together with you on it. But, and maybe it doesn't make sense, but that's really what we had in mind.
Okay. My only other question, and I just want to understand the process from here, I mean, we have this big book with the master plan, and now we're getting, you know, the briefings, and this is probably more for you Ted, too, is you said at the end, the document, what the document will look like. I mean, as we keep getting more and more information, does it supersede this master plan, or is it just, you know, like at the end, when you said the final document, are we going to get an updated version of what's in this book now with all these changes? And that's what we're proving?
Yeah, I believe so. That's a very good question for the development team.
Yeah, because I, you know, we have all these papers now, and of course, you keep it with your book, you go, all right, at the end, what are we proving? We've proven this, we've proven that book, are we proving, you know? I just want to understand, document-wise, what paper we're going to improve at the end.
These, I think the way to think about this is, remember back, and, well, maybe you didn't use Cliff Notes, but I did, in college, these are the Cliff Notes to the overall plan. We're sort of doing it backwards, because the overall documents, they're pretty complicated, and it gets very dense. So we're just taking it sort of section by section and writing this Cliff Notes version, and then by talking about the Cliff Notes version of it, we're learning so that when you get the whole thing, it's like we've talked about it, you've seen it, we can tell you where it is, then you can see the whole book all together, but you can still go back to the Cliff Notes.
Right.
And understand why it's coming together.
Right.
So that's what we're trying to do.
Right. And then at the end, there's got to be something that we're proving that's in one spot, though, that's one...
One thing.
One thing.
We just want to make sure that the Cliff Notes get refined.
Right.
That's right.
Right. The language...
There's no question we're going to try to keep current with these discussions so that we're not missing pieces, or at the end, somebody says, you know, you agreed to do that, and it isn't here.
Right.
That's what we're trying to avoid.
And I think you're doing a terrific job.
Right.
At our best.
I think the whole, whole key we're trying to achieve is a, is a balance, you know, how to balance all of this. Somehow, old New England grew up with our quaint villages with no zoning whatsoever. It says something right there, and everyone loves them.
Yeah.
But, you know, I think that WC eight, WC 10 is probably a little, little heavy on, on commercial. You know, I think what's been discussed about Nutfield, Dunkin' Donuts, of what could be included as part of it. But I think the other thing is what Ann had mentioned up, you know, Hovey around the cemetery, it's a beautiful area up there, that could be made into, you know, like a park or something, you know, as part of open space, so that people could, could walk. And then, you know, even, because we talked about the apple trees along Gilchrist and Pillsbury, have some up there also, maybe along part of the road, because the whole, to be the whole visual along there is that row of apple trees, especially when the blossoms come out early to mid-May, it's kind of like our hallmark of Londonderry is apples, apple trees.
And Art, isn't, Mr. Chairman, isn't that part of the Apple Way?
No.
It's not?
I think that's Pillsbury.
It's just Pillsbury toward Anzac Gilchrist? Is it where Pillsbury, Anzac Gilchrist?
Right, because it's, you know, Pillsbury out here, the other most...
To the west, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we think also that the landscaping along the new roads, what are the kind of trees that they have, and how do they contrast with the apple trees? There's a real chance to create an incredible landscape sequence here.
Because I think there's a lot of nice visuals up there, and I find it very, you know, a lot of people, very relaxing and comfortable, and we kind of keep some of that, that flavor there. Because, you know, I'm sure in the, in the future, if this does, does develop, people that live there are going to enjoy it also, and people who currently live there will think it's nice. Anyway, Jack, you get some, okay, come down here, and then I'll get you Kent after Jack. And then gentlemen in the back, number three.
There are...
You're number four, Ann, if you want to say anything.
There are 35 written comments in 20 pages of very detailed and very interesting information that hand out tonight. And the third-party consultants did a great deal of work putting these together, and they bring up some very, very good points, but obviously, it's quarter after 10:00 at night. And this does deserve to be discussed. We haven't heard much from, from an expert hired by the town to evaluate this, so it's sort of been a little bit on one side, it's side, but it's a great beginning. But I'd like to propose that, that the written comments and questions that have been published, the 20-some-odd pages, deserve to be gone over, because there are comments, there are responses, and then comments, not third-party consultant, and that, those haven't been addressed at all. So much as I would like to say, let's move on, or let's get at it now, I don't think this is the time or the place, but I don't think we should leave all of these items just published in a document and not discussed. There's a couple of points here, a couple of points there, but a great deal, many of which commented on some of the, some of the comments.
Yeah, there's some overlap, and there's not some overlap, and that's what we, we need to take some, some time, or maybe a separate meeting, or maybe we could have time during, during a regular meeting, but...
So we've got to continue this, and the public has to know about it, because some of the issues that were brought up by the public were also brought up by third-party consultant, but only in the printed document, and so this deserves to be gone back over again.
Yes.
And many of us just saw these for the first time tonight, so we'd like to go through them as well.
Yes.
So I appreciate very much the effort.
To me, this is a very iterative thing, and I think, you know, both, both our staff and Ted and the Woodmont team have put a lot of effort into getting us this, so we can, you know, have some, have some meat to discuss and everything.
Okay, well, to make it public, we got it for the first time tonight. So we'd like to have a chance to have some input on it, so we'd like to see these questions addressed in a public session, and I think that they're more than prepared to do so.
And Jack, you know that they are published on the website.
I understand that, but this public...
No, I understand you want to have a conversation.
Have a conversation here with them also, yes.
When they're published on the website, it's, it's, one person says, the other person says, but there's no discussion.
No, I understand what you're saying, I'm just saying...
So they should be on the table, and they should be put up in the private public meetings. I appreciate that very much, and I don't want to hold up everybody else.
Mr. Chairman, should this be Jack's item, and I presume that there'll be updates to this that you would want to appraise us with, that that should be an agenda item for the 13th in addition to transportation?
Yes, because our, our next, next meeting on, on Woodmont is the 13th of February.
So I think we talked about this kind of, you know, we're going to have things that roll over into the next meeting, and we'll need to kind of review those. So should that be, you know, old business, if you will, that we need to follow in with?
Maybe we could just have, maybe have an hour to...
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, can I, can I also say, a lot of these questions and answers also came out of the technical review that we never got to discuss, so I do agree that we probably should be going over this whole thing, because, you know, the technical review was done, but then this whole concept of doing things in sections, talking about things in sections came up. So we never really did get to talk about our technical review questions as a board. I mean, we sent them in, and now we have the answers, but the answers just came out today. We've never discussed it as a board, the answers to the technical questions.
Yes, because what we, what we could do is, besides our regular meeting, is the Fourth Wednesday, we could start meeting, meeting then.
I just think it's important, because some of these questions are basic questions that we didn't get answered yet before we got into the meat of this plan. So I personally, I looked at, I looked this morning to see if the questions were up, as per John's suggestion, I was thrilled to see they were up, and then when I came home this afternoon, the answers were up, and I didn't get the chance to fully read. I've been looking at it tonight, trying to look at the answers. I'd really love to have more discussion on it.
I've only skimmed it myself until I'm through, so...
Yeah. I mean, I appreciate that the answers came up today in time for this meeting, but we really, I, I do agree with Jack, that we really haven't discussed any of this as a board.
Yeah, because what we could do is our, our second meeting of the month is discussed like we did here, Fourth Wednesday, maybe we could handle that stuff.
I would, as one member, would appreciate that.
Two things. First of all, the Woodmont Commons team has proposed sort of an update to the whole schedule, which not this, not in January, but starting in February, that we will definitely occupy the time, both at the second meeting and the fourth date of the month, with substantive discussions. And they have a very clear agenda laid out for us, and they may want to share that with us. But regarding the questions, a lot of what's in the questions that were submitted, and there are many of them, will be part of the discussion that comes along, both from the team and from our consultant, as we get through the various pieces. And you'll see that some of the answers simply say, it's coming in the future. So maybe what we do is glean from the whole list what's appropriate for the discussion for that particular evening, where, where we can focus on that, and you're disagreeing.
To be quite honest with you, my question had to do with tonight, with land use, and the answer was in here, and it's about waivers and things that are coming, and, but I honestly feel like if we just keep putting off asking our questions, we're really never getting our questions answered. Even though they, what I'm, what I'm trying to say, Cynthia, is that once we approved the application, okay, it was approved because technically the application was ready to be approved, but then there was technical review questions that still had to be answered, Even though they, what I'm trying to say, Cynthia, is that once we approved the application, okay, it was approved because technically the application was ready to be approved, but then there was technical review questions that still had to be answered, that HSH still needed time and to come back to us with. We never formally got those answers at a meeting. We never formally got them.
I just want to...
So that's to my recollection.
I just want to correct you, though, the plan hasn't been approved, it's been accepted.
I'm sorry if I'm saying the wrong...
No, it's just that it's a huge difference. It's a huge difference.
Yes, yep.
And all of these questions will be answered before we, well, before I'm going to be comfortable approving it.
And they're really not ready to talk about waivers this evening. That is coming up February 27th.
The only thing I would say is that if it's our plan to come back in February 13th to talk about traffic, and we'll have a deliverable on traffic in advance of that, just like we did to set up tonight's discussion, we might take some time at the beginning of that meeting to talk about the questions that can be answered at that point, and whether there is discussion on some of the responses that were put forward. For example, there's additional questions that I saw on that matrix that we hadn't received before today, and we'll be putting forward some answers for those as well. Some of them will be relevant to the topics that we discussed tonight, or will discuss the next time. Some of them will relate to future meetings. And so, you know, maybe setting aside some time is a good idea, but then trying to parse out what we're ready to discuss and not ready to discuss.
Yes, Cynthia.
I actually have a question for the board as far as the format of how you're getting the questions. It was suggested that you may want to get, we may want to add to the book that you have and get them in hard copy, and then categorized by the actual PUD ordinance that they fall under, if that makes sense to you. Are you okay with getting them on the online version? This is very tricky, and we also, as staff, want to have, create a way where you can, either by date or by category, and we have not come up with that system yet. This was a lot of information to try and synthesize, especially once we got the input from both Woodmont and HSH. So it's definitely a work in progress. If anybody has any suggestions of a good way, other than what's already been done, we don't have a good one yet, so...
Well, I like the fact that you have the comment, the ordinance reference, and then the response.
Okay.
I do like that, that was added in, the ordinance reference. I don't think that was there this morning when I looked at it, and this afternoon, I see the way that it was, we configured, and that's helpful. But there's questions about the PUD ordinance versus the master plan, the Woodmont master plan. There's questions about, you know, impact fees, things like that. I mean, you can categorize them like that, so...
Yeah, how is it, I haven't had a chance to see it, so how is it organized on the site right now?
Right now, I believe it's pretty much in the order that the grant has came in, or whatever.
So I think having a category to them would be appropriate. You know, I talked to Mike about this, Mike Ramstall, earlier, that I think it needs to be by category, because that's how people need to look it up.
Okay. Well, we'll look at that.
And the board can email suggestions to us, Cynthia.
Cynthia, the other thing, if you're going to have to go through that and do that any night, is can you also separate it by, like, we've already gotten all of these questions answered to this date, then for the next date, and then the next date?
Right, and that's why the date was an important factor, too. So it's hard to know, you know, if we're going to organize them by category, then the date thing goes out the window.
Or can the date go along with it, even though, you know, let's say, prime store is by category?
You have category number one, and then you have that date.
And then the color coding as to whether it's been answered or not.
Okay.
Couple of ways to slice that.
Because you have nothing else to do.
No, we're good, we're good.
Did you have some of the answers in the back?
Yep, I got another person.
What do you do in your spare time?
Actually, the old days of planning boards, the evenings still get young.
Kent Allen, Beach Hill Drive. I wanted to thank you for reading the letter art in regards to cemeteries. Also would like the people to understand that there is very definitely a need for additional space. That 300 feet by 485 will probably cover you for 10 years. Your build-out is 20. You're going to be in trouble in 10 more years, so looking at the numbers, we do need space, and hope we could get the 300 feet by 485. Be a big help. Any question?
I guess we'll have to look at other areas for cemetery space.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And the gentleman back there, name and address, please.
Woodmont.
David Misery, Dragonfly Way.
I had just a couple of, you know, major concerns. Well, my major concern is what happens with WC 12, if it doesn't happen, that since all of that Maximus is allowed on the west side, that literally all of that development, except for some small portion of the business development, can end up on the west side, as you had mentioned. And that's a major concern for me, because if 4A doesn't happen, which I have no idea whether it will or not, but if it doesn't, then, as you said, very small amount of development is allowed or would be feasible in that area. And then that really just dumps all of this development into just under 400 acres now instead of 600, which to me is a significant difference. And the other thing was, as relates more specifically to where I, you know, the area I live in, is that, and I hope it's in oversight, there's a wholesale businesses up to 250,000 square feet in WC 9. Okay, thank you. My lot is 80,000 square feet, so...
Okay, anyone else? Mike?
Mike Speltz, 18 Sugar Plum. The developer has a reasonable interest in keeping this as flexible as possible so they can deal with future changes in the market. The town has a legitimate interest in making this as predictable as possible, and those are actual words that are out in page 26 of the document here. I think the problem is, we have leaned way too far in the direction of flexibility at the cost of predictability. So I hope that HSH and the development team and our staff will work toward writing that, and I hate to use the word balance here again a little bit, but that's what it amounts to, is the balance between predictability and flexibility. We've made some suggestions already about the areas that are, you know, 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, 11, that are facing other developed areas. And, you know, we don't have those, those shouldn't have multiple unit dwellings, probably shouldn't have very many duplexes, probably should be mostly single-family, which is what they face. So if we're agreeable on that, then we can, you know, bring that down. We've already got an offer on the table to give us examples of all these things. How much space does a hospital take up? How much space does an office building take up? So we can, with that information, go down the list of Maxima in any particular sub-area and figure out if, is this a 200 or 300 percent, you know, build-out of the area? And let's come up with some reasonable percentage. Maybe it's 150 percent of the area. But I think right now, if you look at each sub-area, it's two and three times the acreage that's in that sub-area if all of the things were built. So that's too much flexibility. That doesn't allow the town to understand what's going to appear in each area. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes. Yeah, I think it's getting the aesthetics, and then the numbers somehow connected. It's, I can't connect them yet, so...
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay. We've got this here so far, so we will meet next on the 13th of February.
We'll have our traffic deliverable in advance of that meeting.
Okay.
If it pleases the board, I think we'll proceed the same way we did this time, which is try to provide a briefing document and then prepare a summary presentation of that document for the meeting.
I worked well.
Yeah, it did work well.
Okay, any other business?
Much to adjourn.
Much to adjourn by Mary. Second by John. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.